And I've got us on.
Presume we're live.
Because it was, it was getting hard to close.
Okay, thanks. Well, that was probably months or years, probably a collection. Can you hear me, Tim?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
A minute. Tim, do you see anything of Commissioner Shane Field? Ah, there we go. There we go. Thank you. Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting for this Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. And at this time, I would like to notify that we have a quorum present. All five commissioners are in attendance via technology. I would ask everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, our first action item will come under approval of the agenda. Fellow commissioners, I would ask that the agenda be amended, that we add under table along with the present agenda item, which is a change order for number two for the Sweetwater County Courthouse Roof Replacement. That also, we add the following items, a contract for WHS for the CR design, also a, there's three cooperative agreements for federal projects. First one is NHPPI-1802200. The second one is a co-op agreement for federal project NHPPI-1802204, and another cooperative agreement with federal project NHPPI-1803147, and then also Sweetwater County Meeting Presentation of the, let me get the exact wording, of the facility Condition Assessment Report Phase Two. And then also another addition under tab U, which those previous three additions were time sensitive, or four, I'm sorry, but also the under tab U is time sensitive, and that's an E signature to approve if the board so chooses. So with that, commissioners, I would ask approval of the agenda with the previous amendments.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next one is approval of the minutes, October 20th, 2020. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 10, 20 minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Next agenda item is tab B, Acceptance of the Bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'll make a motion to approve the county vouchers and warrants and the abates and rebates as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Our next order of business is public hearing budget amendments, and that is budget amendments for Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport and Fleet Vehicle Maintenance. And here with us this morning to present and this these public hearings is Ms. Bonnie Berry. Good morning, Ms. Berry.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We have two budget amendments this morning. The first one is Resolution 20-11-CL-01. It is an expenditure increase to the general fund for the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport in the amount of $222,222. And this will be moved out of the cash carryover in the general county reserves in the same amount of $222,222. This is just following up on the discussion that you had with Devin at the last meeting. He had contacted me and requested that I prepare this budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry? With no questions, commissioners, what's your pleasure with this? Oh, I think we have.
We need to open it up.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Bonnie. Annie, with no further questions for Ms. Berry, at this time, we'll open up this budget amendment for Sweetwater or Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport in the amount of $222,222. The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is open for public comment. Public comment. Anything, Tim?
No, Mr. Chairman, nothing at this time.
Give it a couple more seconds. Closing, public comment for the budget amendment for Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. With that, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Jeff, you're breaking up. Jeff, you're breaking up. I can barely hear you still. Let's go back a moment. Commissioners, your pleasure. There's a lot of disturbance coming from Mr. Smith's site, so I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-11-CL-01 as presented.
We have a motion to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Berry, you're up next for the second one.
Okay, the next one is Resolution 20-11-CL-02. This is a budget amendment. It's actually for last fiscal year, for fiscal year 20, the one that ended June 30th. It is to increase the expenditures in the general fund for fleet vehicle maintenance payroll in the amount of $21,387.64. And it will decrease the expenditures in the general fund fleet vehicle maintenance operating in the amount of $21,387.64. So we're just moving the money from the operating to payroll. And again, this is for last fiscal year. This is due to the voluntary separation program, health insurance that was taken while I was preparing our records for the audit. I discovered that that was not booked in the system. None of the four were. And this department was the only one that was not able to absorb that cost. This department didn't have enough in the budget to cover the $30,000 health insurance payout. So that's why we're doing this budget amendment for this specific department and moving the money from operating to payroll. So if you have any questions, let me know.
All right, listeners. Thank you, Bonnie. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry regarding this budget amendment? With no questions, I'll now open the floor up for a public hearing regarding Resolution 20-11-CL-02, which is unanticipated payroll expenditures within the Fleet Vehicle Maintenance Department for Budget Year 2019-2020 in the amount of $21,387.64. Floor is open for public comment. Floor is open for public comment. Open for public comment. Anything, Tim?
There's no comments on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is now closed for public comment. Commissioner, your pleasure regarding Resolution
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-11-CL-02.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same motion. Motion carries. With that, we'll move into now our, thank you, Ms. Bonnie. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Have a good day and stay. With that, we'll move on. It is now time for county residents concerned. And we'll open up the floor for county residents concerned. Tim, if you get anything, please let us know.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one email that came in this morning.
Very good. I think while we're waiting for others, would you mind reading that, please?
Okay, so this is from David Colvin. And says, hello, I'm asking all commissioners to read and review this new peer-reviewed bulletin from the World Health Organization that came out this month, October. It states that the median mortality rate for COVID-19 for those below age 70 is 0.05 percent, and that the mortality rate for influenza is 0.1 percent. If we are basing all our decisions on science from the medical professions, then hopefully you will take this peer-reviewed and approved study to heart and open up the state, making children wear masks to schools extremely damaging mentally for their well-being and even health. It is time to realize that we have been dealing with this for eight months, and the numbers do not support the extreme measures this county slash state and even nation has taken to combat it. In fact, we have done irreparable damage to the economy. The cost benefit analysis was not done, and now we are reaping the results of a poorly managed panic-stricken induced policy. I've attached the study via PDF, and if you do not trust to download it, I provided a link. Please consider this peer-reviewed study from the medical experts you follow and open up this country, this county. Sincerely, David Colvin. There's a 37-page PDF document attached, so I can send that to you if you want to review that. And that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Tim. Please forward it. Thank you for reading that. The floor is open for county concerns, county comments, public. County concerns. The floor is open. Give it another minute, Tim, and then we'll close it. If we do get any comments, let me know. With that, Tim, anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, nothing.
Okay, with that, I'll close the county residents concerned portion of our agenda, and we'll start with commissioners reports. And good morning, Commissioner Johnson, you're first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off by saying that I strongly agree with what the county resident concerns that were voiced by David Cohen. I couldn't agree with him more. I think that he's right on point, and my following of what is going on in the nation confirms what he is saying, and I agree with that. Next, I have the Public Works Report, which you have all received, but the public hasn't seen it. So buildings, the County Courthouse Roofing Project is approximately complete except for the flashing on approximately half of the parapet. Wall contractors redid the front concrete stairs and fixed some issues that we had that on the handicapped ramp, a drainage at Golden Hour Senior Center this past week. The commissioner's room remodel from the outside looking in seems to be moving slowly along. However, behind the scenes, we have been able to order all of the long lead time items that get all of the various trades lined up and scheduled so that we can make good progress this coming month. Engineering, the fiscal year 2020 crack ceiling project bid is due this Wednesday. We started working on our three-year pavement management projects and have all started, also started looking at the six-year, six-year cycle of the projects so that we can better utilize the fuel tax money that has been and will be received by Sweetwater County. Road and Bridge, we have finished changing out all of our summer equipment for our snow, snow equipment. Obviously, they think it's going to start snowing soon. I don't worry to get that information. But anyway, crews are taking advantage of the moisture that we received last week and the nice weather this week to finish regrading some of the heavily traveled roads. If you've traveled the county roads, you, you know what you've seen. They've done an outstanding job on those roads, and I appreciate that very much, and the public appreciate, appreciates that. I get the feedback from the hunters that are out there on those roads. Custodial, we purchased two backpack electrostatic sprayers to help the custodial crew with the disinfection, disinfection of the sand and sanitization of various parts of the building. These sprayers will be particularly advantageous with the fabric, office chairs, and other materials that may be damaged from the use of harsh chemicals that are wiped or sprayed onto the surfaces. That's the end of that report, and he sent some pictures for you to look at. And the big thing that I've got to report today is at the CLG meeting, this last CLG meeting in Kimmer, we had a presentation that was done by a very astute one professor and another engineer. And what they're basically, the presentation was, is the importance of the baseload on these power plants. They do not believe, nor do I believe, that renewals, renewables are the answer. The impact that that's going to have on Sweetwater County's very significant, and these people are making presentation that shows that, that the renewables primarily because of the lack of batteries, because the renewables, you know, when they, the sun doesn't shine all the time, and the, and the wind doesn't blow all the time, and they really keyed on that. And I asked for copies of the slides that they used, and I haven't received those yet. I checked with Kent yesterday, and I, and I haven't received them yet. But when and if I receive those, I'll, I'll see that each of you get copies of those slides because they're eye-opening, and I appreciate it very much, their willingness to come to Kimmer and make that presentation. So that's the extent of my report, and I'll stand for any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Questions, commissioners, for Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson, in relation to what was presented at the CLG, I think there was a clear demonstration of how reliable green energy was this summer and all the brownouts that took place, what happened on the West Coast because green energy couldn't keep up, and it took our coal-supported plants to pick up their inability to meet those demands. So the report's well-taken, well-understood, and I'm looking forward to seeing the slides. Thank you for that information. Other commissioners, any comments? Thank you. With that, I guess I'm up next. Couple things. First of all, we did do the Gateway South Public Hearing, went, went very, very well for us, had a couple of learning points from it, but the, for Sweetwater County, we did get everything except in WAMSET, or they did reduce their requests. And I think Eric might be able to talk more to it because he's on the agenda later, but my understanding is, is they misread some data. But I do believe that the recommendation of the council to some council members to our membership is WAMSET may be coming and asking for our support for them to go back to the industrial siding for that remainder amount. So Eric can talk more about that. A couple of learning takeaways from that public hearing is, first of all, I call them lessons learned, is I encourage us as commissioners, if we have a lead or co-lead, or if we co-lead on this, that we make sure we're at all aspects of the hearing and, and that type of thing. Because staff may be questioned, and they were at this meeting in the morning, which typically doesn't happen, but it did. And we put staff in a difficult position to answer things where we as commissioners need to be there to answer because they can't speak for us. The other lesson learned is as we review the applications, I will, and I'll accept responsibility for it, but review the appendices as well as the application, because in those appendices are documents and stuff that we may be questioned or be held responsible for. So it's important that we review those appendices in the future. And so those are the two takeaways. Other than that, the public hearing went fairly well, and Sweetwater County was less scrutinized, I believe, than Carbon County was. And it moved smoothly once they got through the Carbon County and the city of Rawlins. I just got to laugh because they were, they really, they were taken to task. So with that, a big kudos to Eric and to John, to Gene, to Mike, to the sheriff, and everybody that participated. They were on their game. They were ready, and we fared well. We will, I hope this commission will support WAMSET when they ask to go back to the industrial siding. Couple other things coming up is Thursday at 2:30. There'll be the Conservation District, they'll have an open workshop at 2:30 to look at the overlay for the roads. That's the overlay of maps, and I believe the county has, has assisted the Conservation District with and, and looking at that system and that type of thing. Also, I, on the way back from the Industrial Society meeting, I did, was able to leave Rawlins and get to WAMSET for the Red Desert Clinic. And so I was there for their meeting, visiting with them. And of course, they're right in the middle of the COVID. I shared with them some things regarding through the state as well as county funding of the cares money and that type of thing, or allocation, and told them to get in contact with Christina regarding some questions about some COVID expenses. So that, that went well. So I just wanted to let the commission know that they did invite us. I get stopped, didn't manage I could stop, did manage to get there and had a good visit with them. So outside of that, Commissioners, that's the extent of my report. Liaison work, still doing a lot of it by technology and doing face-to-face when it's necessary. Oh, I was, one more thing is I hope everybody's staying in the loop with the public health that I've been forwarding to everybody with data and stuff like that. Just don't want to see you get blindsided because things are picking up. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Along with what you're talking about with the industrial siding, obviously, that that was handled differently than it's been in the past. But the thing that has come up that is a little disturbing is the Anshutes Project for the power line going south. We, we were allocated little, I think it was $5.2 million when we testified relative to that project. And just read where that's been delayed two years. So I just, I think everybody needs to be aware of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and I think that's, well, yeah, I agree, everybody needs to be aware of it. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners, for me? If not, moving on, Commissioner Smith, you're on.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Am I more clear now?
Yes, you are. Perfect.
Perfect. Good to hear, good to hear. Yeah, so work continues. The hospital is busily working to expend the funds that they've received through the CARES Act. Had a board meeting last week, and the authorized the CEO to enter into contracts and do what she needs to, to make sure that that money is expended by the deadline and the projects are moving along properly, which is, seems like it's going very well. So they, they were awarded a decent amount of money and have quite a few projects on the table. And so it's awesome to see how everybody is working together to try to accomplish all those and make sure they get done. Also, the, at the airport, same thing. Thank you this morning for the allocation of funds to keep that project moving forward with the terminal. Devon's been working really hard and looking for money left and right and high and low, and done an excellent job trying to find that. And so for us to be able to accomplish a project that I believe we all think is very important and to be able to do it in these challenging economic times with very little coming from our budgets, and the city's budget is truly amazing. So kudos to him. I know we'd all love it if it were zero dollars from our coffers, but, you know, unicorns and rainbows and fairy tales are out there as well, but this is pretty darn close to it. It's really good. So thank you to Devon and all those who worked with him. Do appreciate them very much. And then as far as COVID goes as well, yes, there's a huge swing right now, and we need to be careful so that we're not, you know, heading towards a shutdown again and the, all the bad things that have come along with that. So we're hyper-aware of it at my place of appointments. And I would just encourage everybody to, everybody asks me because we've done things, visits, and have changed, and we were open for them and we weren't. And so people ask me, can we do this? Can we do that? Can I take mom here? Can we do this and that? And I just, I really say, you know what we're trying to accomplish here? And that was, this would be my advice to everybody else. You know what we're trying to accomplish here? We're trying to be safe, we're trying to eradicate this as best we can, or at least keep it at bay until there's a solution for it. And so whatever that means for you, please do it. And so that's my advice, and I hope we don't get to the mandating world. I just, I don't know that that really helps people to be better and do better. And I don't know who's going to enforce it, and so that makes it even more difficult. So please just be responsible, think about your neighbors, your family, loved ones, the economy, whatever you want, whatever motivates you, think about that as you contemplate how you're handling your life and the gatherings you're going to and the things that you're doing each day. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll turn it back to you. I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Smith?
I don't understand why I can't see Mr. Smith, but I guess that's a blessing. So I assume he's in the dark somewhere.
I was thinking.
Amen, brother. Amen.
I was thinking the same thing, then someone reminded me he was at home for this meeting, so I think he forgot to get his hair ready.
I was in line voting, and so I'm actually just coming home right now.
You're still in line voting, so you're on your phone and earbuds.
Took an hour. Yeah, hour and five minutes to vote.
You bring, you bring a new meaning, you bring a new meaning to the new normalist to do a board business. I love it. Hey.
Trying to do my best.
Got a couple of questions for you is, I just want you to clarify for me. Back when we did the public hearing for that 222,000 for the airport, you were trying to attempt to make a motion, were you not?
Yes, I was, and that was the motion I was trying to make. So thank you, Commissioner Schoenfeld, for taking care of that for me. Much appreciated.
And then because there's no way to tell because you muted yourself, I'm going to presume that we should have figured that you were casting a vote of approval for that, right?
I did, yes.
I want, I needed that on the record because you're the liaison.
I. It's a little tardy, but there it is.
All right. Thank you. You have a good day. You stay safe and stay with us. Thank you for your work. Up next.
Sure thing, and whether Wally likes it or not, he'll be seeing my ugly mug here in a few minutes.
All right.
Thanks for the warning.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Up next, Commissioner Schoenfield. Good morning.
Good morning. So liaison work is going well. It's been very busy. Christina with Grants has been very busy still. She submitted eight applications to SLIB last week. I also had the opportunity to go out to Farsen the evening of the 21st for the Eden Valley Improvement District meeting. It's a really good discussion around water access and some potential for development out there for businesses coming in, looking at what buildings and options they have open, potentially partnering them with SEDC as well to try to, to try to maybe bring in some business leads to their area also. So I look forward to continuing to work with them. Golden Hour Senior Center closed out their fiscal year, and they wanted me to report that they served 41,233 meals, which was an 8% increase over the previous year. And with that, 7% of the increase was actually coming from the home-delivered meals, and 8.5% of the increase is coming in the dining room and curbside meals. So they're seeing an increase for low-income assistance requests, and they're starting to notice that it's starting to take a toll on their patrons' mental health due to the isolation from the pandemic. So they're doing everything they can to safely serve the seniors. They said that it's very concerning to them because they serve the most high-risk population with 80% of the seniors that they serve having at least one chronic health condition, and 50% of them have at least two chronic health conditions. So they're excited to report also that CenturyLink fiber upgrade to the building is complete, and their tech center will be done by the end of the year, this calendar year. They're going to be using that room to help seniors remotely connect with their loved ones and do some telehealth visits during that pandemic and then move that into the future as well. So this is good timing. I'm very excited that they've been working on this for a long time. So in addition, oh, the museum had a meeting last week, I believe. In addition to the usual museum visitations and the research requests, they've also hosted a few new educational group tours, and they've been doing that with social distancing, face masks, and other precautions. So they had some planning behind that, but they've been very successful. They've also been reaching out to the public via email, Facebook, and other social media outlets. They have named that artifact posts and some YouTube history videos and things like that that have been getting hundreds of hits daily, so that's exciting. It's good to see them kind of be able to transition into this new time of everything being online. They're also been really busy with some seasonal celebrations and observations. They just won the parade entry, just won first place for Green River. And that was the Haunted Sheep Camp that they had. It was, it was pretty cool. So congratulations to them. And then after Thanksgiving, they're going to install another temporary exhibit to celebrate Christmas and the other religious seasonal observations. So they also wanted me to report that they haven't made any final decisions regarding the personnel changes, so they haven't backfilled for the position that they have open there. They want the museum to be fully staffed and functional, but they're also very concerned with the budget cuts and everything else. So I want to commend them on being very aware of that and doing everything that they can to conserve money. I had the opportunity to meet with the Events Complex also on the 21st with Larry and Candy. We had some discussions around how we can, they can move forward within the COVID guidelines and everybody canceling things and all of that. And also some potential for some marketing campaigns partnering maybe with Travel and Tourism and SEDC and the Wyoming Business Council. So we had a meeting yesterday to discuss some of those options as well with Janessa from Travel and Tourism, Kayla, myself, and then the Wyoming Business Council. And there's some opportunities, I think, that we have for marketing Sweetwater County, looking at some economic development and growth and working with all of those partnering agencies to support us and maybe looking at some grant funding as well. So on the broadband front, the evening after our last board meeting, I was notified that I'd been appointed to the National Association of County Officials National Broadband Task Course. So I had the opportunity to attend a virtual event for that a few days after the announcement. And I'm really looking forward to being a part of that national task force and getting some ideas from what some of our other states have done and, you know, really working to ensure that we have the best technology possible, especially during this time of COVID and recognizing that we're probably going to be transitioning to a lot more online going forward, even when we can meet together in person. So that is all that I have. Now, stand for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Schoenfield. Questions for Commissioner Schoenfield?
Just a comment of, woo-hoo, congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good job. All right. Any other comments, Commissioners? Great report. Thank you. Up next, Commissioner Lloyd.
All right, let me pull my notes here. First of all, let's just start with a couple, first of all, Rock Springs Girls Volleyball Team won their conference title this weekend, and will go to state. I think we should commend that group of young ladies, and also the Green River High School Girl Swim Team won conference. And they'll also be swimming in state this week. Great work. And really cool to see those young kids doing some great things out there. As far as liaison work, had a couple of meetings, met with Southwest Counseling. We continue to meet by Zoom and use technology, discuss some of the cuts that Southwest Counseling has seen from the governor's cuts. They weren't as bad as we thought they would be. And, but they, but they have seen some smaller cuts and some smaller in areas, bigger in others, but it, it is rounding out that it hasn't been the effect that they thought it could be. Now, remember though, this is the first round. If there are further cuts, it could look uglier, but at this point, it wasn't as bad as they thought it would be. They also have got some CARES Act money, and I just want to note that all the agencies that I've talked to from the external areas that we help with have been nothing but more than complimentary and appreciative of Christina's work and her guidance and helping with those grants. And, and I can tell you, I do know at least for the Events Complex and the library, no, sorry, the Events Complex and the Southwest Counseling, there are huge booms and positive, positive additions that will be happening because of that CARE money. And they were, they spoke very highly of Christina, which we already know, and appreciate her efforts, but I want to make sure that's noted. As far as Events Complex, I met with the board. Know kind of some interesting numbers there. At this point, they've had to cancel approximately 55 events because of COVID. As of last, what, Tuesday? The last scheduled Christmas party out there was canceled, so they actually aren't hosting any Christmas parties out there this year, which is unusual. And their estimation is they've lost about $1.1 million in revenue due to those events being canceled. Just to kind of show the impact that they've had from COVID. They have some events still going, but they have, but they, but they have, but they're greatly cut back. They've already actually started looking at plans for the fair and how to modify the fair if need be to bring it back for next year. That was really all I had for meetings. I was a little more front-loaded this last month and shared that at the last meeting. Couple other things I think that are important to note. Strategic planning, I did get the notes out finally. I appreciate Doc and Lauren for proofing that with me and making sure it looked good. I did get that out, and I just kind of want to talk. I have had some conversations still with the University of Wyoming, and we're moving forward on a, some kind of survey to get information for, from the public about what they'd like to see at the county. And I think that's important to note that we are working collaboratively, not only within our county, but the component agencies will be joining us next time. But we are reaching out for people's input. So I encourage the community, if you have ideas and concepts, reach out to and tell us because as we enter this process, those, those ideas and your concepts are huge. And I just want to thank everyone for their acceptance into this and willing to work for, work forward and move forward with this process. Met with a lot of different officials, elected officials, department heads, and county employees throughout the last couple of weeks. I do thank them for their time and information. And I guess the last thing I'll hit is Jeff's kind of mentioned it. And I do want to note, when Jeff did vote that one time, it did, I couldn't tell if it was Jeff or R2D2 from it breaking up. But, but I did hear a little, but I want to, but as you saw, it's great lines. I'm just kind of taking a look at a couple of things on social media. People are noting how long the lines are throughout the county, and I don't, they want to say that as a bad thing, Cindy. So it's just a good thing. It shows that people are out getting voting. And I, I do encourage you to vote if you haven't. I can tell you, I know yesterday was a madhouse down here, the little bit of time I was down here with lines. And I think someone actually told me they had around 500 votes come in on Friday. So I do appreciate people getting out and voting, but this is a huge election. And not only federal-wise, but statewide and locally, make sure your vote is heard. And, and, and I, you know, we, we can read on social media on any given day, someone's sharing about 9,000 opinions. This is the one thing you can do to make those opinions stand. So I encourage you to vote, and I, and, and I will, even though I don't know if it's appropriate, wish the best of luck to our comrade Lauren Schoenfield tonight, but also to everyone who put their name in. Two years ago, I sat at my house nervous as a wreck probably because you really put yourself out there, win or lose, if you, if you run for an office. And, and it's a sacrifice for your family and your time, but it's an honor to be served, to be elected, and it's an honor to even try. So kudos to everyone that's made the effort and best of luck to all the candidates today.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Lloyd? No questions. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Good report. Commissioners, our next action item is Tab D, which is a resolution supporting the Rock Springs and Southwest County Airport. It's scheduled for 9:40, and I hate to start early. So we're going to take a break for at least 25 minutes and come back on, let's say, 9:35. And that might be a good time to start because I believe those participants will be available. So we'll take a break till 9:35. Thank you. So we'll take a break till nine thirty-five. Thank you.
Hey, Roy, they bought, uh, oh no, never mind. It's not able hands, is it?
Life skills?
Must be life skill. I think life, did life skills? Maybe it's life skills. Anyway, they bought the house next door. Guess it's not able hands. Yeah. I was going to say able hands bought the house next door, but it's unlikely it is. I think it's life skills. And actually, one of the girls that worked, that lives there works for me. Out in Plaza, or at Deer Trail.
That's funny.
She doesn't know that yet. She's been there a couple of weeks. I haven't told her we're neighbors yet.
I would hold on that.
Yeah, the folks are like, oh, she's going to be over at your house all the time. She's known Leslie, my wife, for a long time and, and uh, yeah, they're like, she'll be over at your house all the time.
Yeah, interesting stuff.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, it is.
Gene told me he was thinking that the, the meeting room could be ready by December fifteenth.
He told me it'd be ready before Thanksgiving. That was a while.
Ready. No, I didn't. The majority would be done by before Thanksgiving.
The majority. What does that mean?
It's a political season. You guys figure it out.
Okay, that's true. Way to go, Gene. Nice job.
And Jeff, you could have pondered that while you stood in line. You would have had plenty of time to think it through.
I did. I had plenty of time to think it through. Uh, share a gross nickel out there.
It took me an hour and five minutes to vote. It usually takes me two minutes to vote.
Hey, that was an hour, hour and ten.
Yeah.
Hey, gentlemen, we're less than a minute away, so as soon as the clock gets.
I think that was five minutes.
Five, we'll get going. Okay, we call this meeting county commissioners back to order. And with that, moving uh, through our agenda, the first item, action item up is Tab D, which is a resolution supporting the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport Board submission of an application to the Wyoming Business Council under the Business Ready Community Grant Loan Program for a community readiness project. And with us to present and make that request is Mr. Devin Brubaker, Southwest Regional Airport's Executive Director. Welcome, Devin. You're out there.
Good morning.
Good morning. There you are. You moved on my screen.
That was strategic.
I figured that. Go ahead. Floor is yours. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commission. Uh, before you this morning is a resolution of support for the, uh, Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport Board's grant application to the Wyoming Business Council. As a joint powers board, uh, it is required that when we apply for Wyoming Business Council grant that we uh, submit with it a resolution from the airport board as well as one from each of the, uh, joint powers parties, and in this case, the county and the city of Rock Springs. Uh, the city has it on their agenda for this evening, and it's before you, uh, this morning. This resolution follows a sample format that the business council provides with just minor edits, uh, to tie it to the specific, uh, project. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brubaker. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Brubaker?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but just the the comment, uh, that, um, fully support, uh, what he's doing and appreciate the work he's doing and um, this, this letter will also help, uh, in the grant process. And so we're ha- I'm happy to support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other comments, commissioners, questions? If not, I would like to say also I support the project, the work that's been done. Uh, I especially appreciate, you know, we always talk about skin in the game. We do have skin in the game as a county and as city of Rock Springs, but I really appreciate the fact that it's as minimized as it is. It'll be a boost for the county as well as regional areas, not just Sweetwater County. Um, I think the work that Devon and his board are doing, um, is phenomenal, and, uh, the growth out there has has been exceptional, uh, in the last four, five, six years. And and I just want to thank that board as well as, uh, Devon and his staff and the leadership of getting, seeing this project through even through these, uh, times that we're presently through. So any other comments, commissioners? Any questions? Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the resolution number two zero dash one one dash GR dash zero and its, uh, uh, resolution authorizing the submission of application to the Wyoming Business Council under the Business Ready Community Grant and Loan Program for a community readiness project on behalf of the governing body of Sweet Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport?
So move, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sally, are you there?
She's in her office, Jeff, or.
Okay, on that resolution, uh, my last name was spelled wrong. Um, could we please correct it before I sign it and the other commissioners? Thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on to Tab E, which is a approval letter of support for the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport Board's grant application to the Wyoming Business Council. And with us to make that presence presentation is Ms. Marshall, our grants writer. Devon, thank you very much for being on this morning and making that presentation. And good luck and look forward to seeing you.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, uh, sorry, I'll stick around in case there's any questions on this next item as well.
Thank you, Devon, if you would please. Christina, the floor is yours.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. At last meeting, you asked me to prepare a letter of support for the grant application that you just approved for the airport. So I'm not going to repeat all the information, but I do want to emphasize the importance of this business council grant that, uh, Devon is pursuing. Uh, in my summary to you, I noted that it's a three million dollar request that would contribute sixteen point two percent to the overall project. So it is very critical to try to go after this money. Otherwise, we're not sure how it will be funded. So I just want to make that very important comment. Um, I prepared this letter with input from Devon. I also spoke spoke to a couple commissioners and staff about it. And so if you have any questions about the letter itself, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions or Devon's still on board here, so, um, he can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Christina. Questions for Christina or Devon, commissioners? With no further questions, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shaneville.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the letter of support as presented and allow the, or authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioners, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Christina, for the great work. Devon, thank you. I hope this will help out and I'd like to just reference the fact of when you look at those percentages, if we can keep it at seven point three percent, what a, what a great, great buy for the Southwest Regional Area Airport County and everybody. Thank you, Devon and Christina. Thanks for your work. Have a great day and be safe. All right, next up will be Tab E. Or I'm sorry, Tab F, which is approval to ratify and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty one community service block grant and sub guarantee contracts. And here to present that again is Ms. Marshall. Again, welcome back.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the county was awarded one hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars in federal community services block grant funding from the Wyoming Department of Health. These were projects that were recommended by the Sweetwater County Tripartite Board. Uh, the funding must be expended between October fifth, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and it requires no cash match. Now, this award had to be signed out of a commissioners meeting due to state time constraints to getting it back and trying to execute the contract as close to October one as possible. So, uh, we had, or I had spoken with our Deputy Attorney John De Leon about this and received his approval to do that. So that's why we're ratifying that. Now, this con- or this grant purpose, according to CSBG, is to empower low income individuals to overcome the effects of poverty and support their progress towards self sufficiency. The county will actually be awarded the funding and then it will be passed through to different programs and agencies. So there's four agencies who, uh, were recommended and approved funding. Uh, the first one is Rock Springs Young at Heart. Three programs were, uh, recommended and approved funding. Those are, uh, the Early Learning Center that provides childcare services. And then next, the in-home, um, uh, services program that is for homemaker services to elderly and disabled individuals. And then finally, their meals program, they provide meals and special food diet to elderly and disabled individuals. So Rock Springs Young at Heart is being allocated sixty one thousand seventy eight dollars from the award. Next, uh, Sweetwater County School District Number One Head Start uh, is being recommended and awarded funding for their comprehensive case management family advocate. That amount is thirty thousand seventy two dollars. Next, Sweetwater Family Resource Center is, uh, being recommended and awarded funding for housing assistance. So that's emergency rent also, which, uh, sometimes is in the form of a motel stay as well as utilities. They're being recommended and awarded twenty five thousand. And then finally, the YWCA of Sweetwater County has two programs being, uh, recommended and awarded funding. Those are the Early Care and Learning Center for childcare services. And that's for parents who are working, seeking employment, or attending school. And then last, rent deposit payments and utility payments to victims of domestic violence through the center for families and children. Their total award is sixty four thousand. And then finally, there's some funding for administration and operational costs, uh, that includes insurance for the tripartite board members, advertising costs, dues, travel and training. That amount is nineteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So, um, just one important note, this funding, the eligibility, uh, poverty level has increased from one hundred and twenty five percent to two hundred percent, and that is because of the international health emergency. To put that in perspective, previously to qualify for this type of assistance, a family of three, uh, if their income was up to twenty seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, they would qualify. Now, that amount for a family of three to qualify for some of this assistance is forty three thousand four hundred and forty dollars. I just want to put that in perspective because I think there's a lot of impacted people in our community because of the pandemic and receiving housing assistance or childcare services, et cetera, is very important. They should tap into this assistance. Uh, and then finally, our award increased eight percent since last year, and that's in part because of our compliance. So I'm very happy about that. So with that, that's all I have to present. Uh, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Christina. Commissioners, questions for Christina?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shaneville.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment and that this funding is really important to, um, those low income families in our communities. They worked with it through the YWCA. Um, it does hold the, um, agencies that receive that to a very high level of record keeping. Um, Christina always does a great job of coming in and auditing those records. Um, but this, this funding is very important, and I just wanted to tell the tripartite board, thank you for their time um, and efforts in reviewing all these applications and doing all the meetings that they do. Um, it's, it's very important to our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaneville. Other comments, commissioners, or questions for Christina? Thank you, Commissioners. Christina, I can only echo Commissioner Shaneville's comments being on the Tropic Tarp Lloyd Board, and, uh, I, uh, I especially am pleased that, uh, towards the end of our budget year with the tripartite, we always make sure that, uh, entire allocation spent by moving it around if someone hasn't. Um, the high level, I wish we had the same high level of oversight for many other, um, uh, programs, uh, that where money is involved. And, uh, uh, I continue to believe the work that's being done by that board as well as, um, the oversight has been done very well, and I thank you and your board members for their hard work with this. Uh, Commissioners, with regard to approval to ratify and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty one community service block grant contract and sub guarantee contracts, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'll, I'll make that motion to move, ratify the community services block on grant contract and approve and authorize the chairman to sign the federal fiscal year two twenty twenty one sub grantee contracts for Rock Springs Young at Heart, Sweetwater County School District Number One, Sweetwater County Family Resource Center and YWCA Sweetwater County.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any other discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Tab G, which is approval to ratify and approve the Community Service Blank Cares Act Contract and Sub Guarantee Contracts. Ms. Marshall, you're still with us.
Floor is yours. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is very similar to the last award that you just approved. CSBG Community Services Block Grant. The difference is this is from federal cares act money that we apply for. It has nothing to do with the state one point two five billion dollars. So it falls under CSBG with the same requirements. However, um, I just want to point out a couple things. As opposed to starting on October fifth, this funding under CSBG Cares Act can go all the way back to March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, and it can, uh, go past next federal fiscal year, but two years. So we have until September thirtieth, twenty twenty two to expend this. It requires no cash match. And again, because of time constraints at the state level, it was signed outside of a meeting, and that's why I'm asking you to ratify it. Now, one fine detail is CSBG Cares Act is to enhance poverty fighting efforts and prevent, prepare for, and respond to the impacts of the coronavirus disease pandemic. It will also be passed through to agencies. And it's interesting because when you, you look at poverty right now in Sweetwater County, i- it's really co-mingled. A lot of times now the agencies are finding it hard to separate who was impacted from the pandemic and who wasn't. However, for this funding, we had to do another needs assessment to supplement the tripartite board's main assessment that's done every three years. I worked with the state to do this. And I think you would find it interesting that back in August, it was determined that the top three needs in Sweetwater County as it relates to the cor- coronavirus pandemic are health and medical care. Second, housing and utility assistance. And three, agency capacity. That means, again, agencies just don't have enough manpower to address the demands right now. Uh, the minimum poverty rate to qualify is also two hundred percent, just as in my last example. So two agencies actually requested this funding through the tripartite board. Uh, they're both housing needs. So Sweetwater Family Resource Center, there, they were recommended and awarded housing assistance for rent and utility. So households can avoid eviction and or utility shut off, and they're also getting some funding for administrative costs. Their award alone is one hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars. The second agency who requested funding and is being awarded is YWCA Centers of Families and Children Program. That their request is to provide rent and or deposit assistance so households of victims of domestic violence can obtain safe and affordable housing. Their award is fifty four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Sadly, in the needs assessment, it identified that, uh, domestic violence is on the rise during this ta- pandemic. So I'm very pleased to include them in this, uh, project. And then finally, um, Sweetwater County slash Sweetwater County Tripartite Board, it was awarded seventy seven thousand eight hundred and ninety seven dollars. Now, it was put in this category. Now, it was put in this category not because uh it's going to go back to the county, but interestingly, of this total award of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand six fifty-seven, we could not actually disperse it all. There was not enough demand at this point. So it's being held under the county to transfer at a later date in the two-year period. So just to be clear, that money's not allocated to my office or the county. But it's to be able to distribute in the next two years. And that would, the, the approval for that would go through the tripartite board. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Marshall? Comments? It's incredible. Incredible. Good job, Christina. Um with no further questions, Commissioners, your pleasure regarding this agenda item.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the Community Services Block Grant Cares Act Contract and approve and authorize the chairman to sign the sub-grantee contracts for the Sweetwater Family Resource Center and the Y W C A Sweetwater County.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Very good job, Christina. Appreciate it. Next up uh is Tab H, which is approval to ratify and approve the Community Service Block Grant Cares Act Contract and Sub-Guarantee Contracts. Wow. No, we just did that. I'm sorry. Tab H is the approval of Resolution two zero dash one one dash G R dash zero two for submission of a coronavirus relief grant application for the Sweetwater County COVID-nine Incident Command Team Payroll. Commissioners, uh at this time, because of a conflict of interest on this agenda item, I would like to recuse myself from this item. Um I'd like to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Johnson for this item. And I would ask that uh Mister Knight, if you please move me into the waiting room. And then at the completion of this agenda item, uh please uh return back to the uh meeting room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh and I very much appreciate the fact that you are recusing yourself. I think it's the appropriate thing to do because there is conflict in my opinion, so we'll move forward with that. So Christina, you uh would tell us what you can about it.
Okay, so Mister Acting Chairman and Commissioners. Uh as you're aware, the county can apply for Corona, coronavirus relief grant funding from the Office of State Lands and Investments. Uh and in this case, we're applying for qualifying payroll. There is no uh cash match required. However, this must be invoiced to the Office of State Lands by December fifteenth. So the purpose of this funding is to assist with expenses related to COVID-nineteen public health emergency and crisis. This is funding through the state, though part of the one point two five billion dollars, it's not at all related to the grants we just uh went through. So in this application, just so you know, Sweetwater County was in partnership with the cities of Green River and Rock Springs who established an emergency operations center and incident command team to provide a rapid and effective community uh wide response to COVID-nineteen. So the county actually had employees track hours and uh had a loaded uh pay rate with benefits and salary. Uh we tracked one thousand eight hundred sixty-seven point five hours for county employees, again, who worked on that incident command team. I provided for you in your packet just a list of the employees who submitted uh their time sheets for their hours. I can honestly say that everyone had more hours than listed. It's just uh I think time constraints, some folks could not turn in hours or time sheets. But that has become very important documentation for us to apply. Now, bottom line is, you have a group of employees submitted their hours on time sheets. The total amount of this application is a hundred and four thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Now, if approved, that is not a bonus that comes back to any of these employees. This would go back to the county's general fund. I just want to make that clear. Uh I also spoke with the cities of Green River and Rock Springs and encouraged them to apply for reimbursement under their allocation pots through the Office of State Lands. Uh as a side note, and I don't want to use up all your time, but uh the deadline to submit final applications to the Office of State Lands is December third. Uh even though this next meeting coming up here uh this Thursday, uh all the funding for the entities will be swept into one pot. We could still apply, which under this uh, if you prove this uh request today, it will get uh considered on their December third meeting. The SLIB Board is looking at if entities uh used up all their allocations or not. So I think we have a decent chance of getting this awarded, but you never know. So with that, this is just ours. Uh that was covered by the county. I do want to let you know, I did apply for a FEMA public assistance grant for expenditures under that E O C for the P P E items. We have not received that contract yet, although I know that it has, our request has been approved at the federal level. So this is completely separate from those expenses in which the county and the cities each put in fifty thousand dollars. And upon approval, that FEMA P A application, the entities would be reimbursed. So sorry, I hope I did not confuse you anymore, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Christina. Uh I think the point you made that's extremely important is this all goes into the general fund. And I'd also, I've watched what was going on with this team, and I think they've done an outstanding uh job of uh stepping up when, when it was needed. And when you look at the hours that were expended, it, it's very, very impressive. I do have one question of John DeLeon. Uh John, uh this uh motion authorizes the chairman to act. Uh the fact that he has recused himself is, would that still be appropriate, or should that uh mo- motion to approve unauthorized the acting chairman, which in this case would be me? Uh what are your thoughts on that, John?
Chairman Johnson, I think, I think the uh the request is that you as acting chairman sign this document.
Uh so knowing that, this documentation will have to be changed a little bit, but we can still move forward with it. So at this point, uh my co-commissioners, what questions or comments might you have?
Chairman Johnson, I, I, just a quick comment. I was also wondering the same question, and I just think you're, I think you and Attorney DeLeon are correct, and just if we change that verbiage to acting chairman to sign, it makes total sense to me, and that's the way I think we can move forward with.
Thanks, Roy. Any other comments? Hearing none, uh I entertain a motion to approve and authorize the acting chairman to sign Resolution twenty dash eleven dash G R dash zero two and all required documentation for the submission of the coronavirus relief grant applications for the Sweetwater County COVID-nineteen Incident Command Team Payroll.
Done.
We have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Shanefield. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was muddled. Who said, who seconded it?
We both did.
Motion was seconded by Commissioner Smith. It looked like he was asleep earlier, and that was deceiving, so he was paying close attention and by seconding the motion. Appreciate that, Commissioner Smith.
You, Mister Acting Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So we can bring uh Chairman Wendling back into the, into the uh meeting, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are we back?
Yeah, Doc, there is one uh, one modification that's going to have to be made on this. Uh and we cleared this with uh Mister DeLeon is that the documentation will have to authorize the acting chairman to sign the cetera, cetera resolutions.
Thank you.
Done, but there, it passes and with the thanks for, to all of you, including the, you, Mister Chairman, as to your contribution to this act, to this effort. Thank you.
And as, as I'd just like to comment, we do know that the um command unit is sized down, but yeah, it's still in operation through public health with the same objectives in, in line, and that's to uh continue to work towards uh making sure our, our hospital position remains low enough not to tax uh them, so. But thank you to all those people that were involved and uh that type of thing, and those that continue to work with it. So, but thank you, Mister Chairman, for taking over and uh running through, and uh thanks for that catch on the signature. Can't tell you how much I appreciate it. And with that, uh are we ready to move on?
I believe so, Doc.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, up next will be uh Tab I. And I believe that's Climb Wyoming update on their current role and programming during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And I think here to present to us and visit with us is Ms. Gray, the Executive Director for Climb Wyoming for this region. Good morning, Brittany.
Hi.
Welcome aboard.
I'm excited to be here.
Well, excited to have you, and we're, I look personally, and I'm sure everybody else does look forward to this update. So with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the introduction, and again, I'm Brittany Gray. I'm the Program Director here in Sweetwater County for Climb Wyoming. And I wanted to come and give you an update, but first and foremost, just say thank you for staying committed to the families who are fighting poverty right now during, it's a pretty unsettling time. Um single moms have been hit so hard by this pandemic. If these single moms have lost jobs in service, hospitality, retail, the list goes on. And decisions between working, educating their kids, trying to keep food on the table, et cetera, have been pretty difficult. So through all of this, um it's because of you that can share some hopeful news. Our top priority continues to be um serving as a resource hub for moms and children during this critical time. Um Climb's model, which was developed thirty-five years ago, so we're excited to celebrate our thirty-fifth anniversary this year. Um our model intentionally creates structure, support, and skill-building in times of crisis. Um and so we've helped over a thousand women statewide during the pandemic. And here in Sweet, here in Sweetwater, beyond just the twenty new participants, participants we serve each year, Climb continues to communicate with roughly two hundred candidates annually, as well as seventy-five graduates that we continue to support with advocacy, mental health needs and employment questions. And our staff is continually working with other community partners who want to know um what the needs of our moms are, and they reach out to us to help support with resources and vice versa. We are also continuing training and job placements steadily as these moms discover self-sufficiency and contribute to Wyoming's workforce. So when the pandemic first hit, um here in Sweetwater, we were training C D L participants, um short-haul truck driving. And we were able to get all twelve women through their testing. They all got their Class A licensure, and majority were employed pretty quickly, which was just amazing. Um currently, we are training C N As, which are Certified Nursing Assistance, to fill critical workforce gaps that we're experiencing in our community. So both these trainings were and continue to be set up and administered in responsible ways, thinking about utilizing social distancing, mass, and innovative virtual training. So um like I said, majority of our women were able to find positions quickly, which is just um a testament to our community partners and employer partners. And now we're ramping up for job placements once the women take their C N A state tests mid-November. Um there's also some other exciting announcements. The strength that you have helped give us has led to some national attention. Um the innovative and virtual job trainings that we've developed since the pandemic hit have led to our selection as one of four organizations nationwide on a federal inter-agency task force on economic mobility. In addition to this, we uh presented these best practices at a regional U S Department of Agriculture forum, and we just presented again at the National Forum in October. I'm also excited to share that Ray Fleming-Danin, who is Climb's founder and Executive Director, was recently recognized in USA Today as one of ten women of the century of Wyoming. So her vision has made this possible, but it's your support that keeps this going. So I just, um besides the update and closing, and I'm happy to answer any questions, I just want to say thank you again because your support um for these vulnerable families is critical, especially right now, because it means that we get to continue to step up, lead, and be innovative to not just meet the workforce demands, but really help these women in our community. So um thanks for helping make these families stronger and more resilient, and we just really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Uh before we have any questions, or no, let's, I want to remind Commissioners, I asked Mister Legursky to get on because he's been a big part of uh making sure that uh the employability of some of your um people, your ladies, has uh worked within the county, and, and I think it's important for us to know and community know as to how that impacted the county. So I asked him to join us. And with that, um before I bring Gene on, Mister Legursky for our uh public directs, public directors, public works director, Commissioners, do you have any questions for uh Brittany, and then we'll go to Gene?
Mister Chairman.
Mister Johnson.
I'd just like to echo uh what has been said many times about what their, their projects end up doing for these, these women. It's, it's uh, it's very heartwarming to see what you do and, and how you help those people. And I think the, the feedback that uh I've received, they are very well qualified to do the jobs that they committed to do. So it's, I, I'd like to compliment you and your staff, uh all of those involved. They've done a great job. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Gray. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, any other?
Sorry.
Well, you're fine.
I'd like.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'll let Lauren go first, ladies.
All right. Lauren.
First and foremost, I just want to tell Brittany and her team, congratulations on the national recognition. Um you guys have done a great job. Um I'm also, I'm very proud to be able to be involved in the interviewing process that, you know, that you do to help prepare these women for the workforce. And I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, and I'm excited that you guys are being recognized on a national level. And I really appreciate the work that you guys do within our community, and I'm excited to be a part of it still, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mister Lloyd.
Yeah, you know, just kind of going to follow suit of Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Shanefield. And just want to thank Brittany and her crew for the great work they do in the community. I've been a longtime supporter and, and partner with uh Climb and, and can tell you, I've seen um, um I've been able to get good employees from Climb, but I've also had good people that were employees be able to go to a different career and make a better life for themselves because of the program at Climb. So even when Brittany stole employees from me and they went to other places, it was always positive, and it was good for those families. And so um, and I think we talk about the job impact and that. I think what we miss in Climb and people from the outside miss the training and the, and the education they get just about how to make their lives better. Um and the supports they get, and it's even almost greater than some of that job training. So well-deserved on the kudos and honors, Brittany, and um I've been proud to be part of, you know, indirectly, directly of um some of your guys' work for the last um fifteen years, so I appreciate it, Brit.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other comments, Commissioners? I'm going to just say I echo, echo their comments, and uh uh I encourage anybody to look at the data. And they'll see that uh I've always said it's been the best bang for the buck. And uh it's definitely impacted the county, state, whatever, because of the, of where these uh individuals that you've trained in that gotten ready and have jobs, or what they're doing with their families. As an educator, I'm telling you what, it makes a difference with their kids. Um but all in all said, Brittany, this couldn't have been done if there wasn't a conviction on your part and your team's part to make this happen and make it a reality, bring it back to Sweetwater County. And uh I'm, I'm not only proud of your graduates, people out there working, but I'm exceptional- out there working, but I'm exceptionally proud of you and your staff for how you've impacted Sweetwater County. So with that, Gene, I asked you to get on, because I think you might be able to share how Clime has impacted the county, if you would please.
You know, this is the first year that we participated in the Clime Wyoming. Been involved on and off, seeing them last 15 years since I've been in Rock Springs. And it was a great help for us. You know, we only have seven belly dumps. A lot of times they said I'll, because we just don't, we don't have enough people running. We hired the two Clime Wyoming ladies, and they worked out wonderful. We were able to employ them for five months because of the, you know, the payback program that they have with a three-month summer that we had in budget. And they were great. They learned various pieces of equipment. They get it, they got to drive everything. They would come up and ask if they could get on different pieces of equipment. And we tried to train them on, you know, loaders and other stuff to make them more employable. They were both just fantastic. Couldn't ask for better employees. I wish we could hire them full-time. I, last week, I wrote them both letters of recommendation and told them not to hand them out too much, because I didn't want them to get another job that we would take them next year. But I completely understand if they, they'll, they'll find a place. They were both great employees. So I, it, it was a huge impact to us, you know, because if you look at the seven, seven trucks, if we have two sitting there, that's a third of our fleet sitting there idle. And during the summertime, they, they plugged the hole that was greatly needed.
All right. Thank you, Gene. Certainly appreciate it. That, that part of the program wouldn't have been even possible if you hadn't stepped up and said, hey, we want to help and that type of thing. So I want to thank you and your crew and your trainers for working with the ladies and, and making them better employable. Definitely a double-edged sword you have to deal with, but what a good problem to have. Thank you, Gene, for what you've done to support.
Yeah, it's a great thing. And matter of fact, Mr. McClain and I met with Katie Glennemeyer about a month ago to kind of, if you guys keep approving a couple of truck driving summer hires, we just told Katie that they'll make sure that we can get two or three of them every, every graduation, that they can have some.
Thank you, Gene. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments. With that, Brittany, any final comments as we close this part of our agenda?
Yeah, thank you. I just, again, like Gene, just for the partnership and your work with Katie Glennemeyer, who's our business liaison, working hard to make sure that we're meeting the workforce needs. And so just hearing that is so helpful. And I so appreciate the comments from the Commission. And just to share, the team is working hard, but these women like have the tenacity to do these amazing things. And we are all just honored to be just a small part of their journey. So I'm just so honored to like kind of pull back the curtain and give you all a look into what's happening. I'm happy to share updates anytime. And I'm looking forward to having some more CNAs in our community. So Jeff, I'm looking at you. So.
So we love to have them. I know we're, we're expecting some. So, yeah, we always need great ones. And we've worked well. It worked out great in the past, and we expect them to do so in the future. So, thanks, Britt.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Brittany, and thanks for the great partnership. And you take care and be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye. With that, we'll move on. Commissioners, we'll move into Tab J, which is a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement approval. And with us for that is Mr. Knight, our IT Director. Hello, Tim, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Once again, it's time for us to renew our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. We've been in this agreement for six years. Every three years, it comes up for renewal. Microsoft's a very important software that we use in our environment. All of our servers, or most of our servers, use some form of databases or operating systems. We have our Office Suite. So basically, the reason to bring it forward is because it is quite significant dollar amount that we spend on Microsoft every year. And by entering into a three-year contract with Microsoft to do this every year, I do a true-up, meaning that we kind of are able to use the software. And then if there are any changes to the amount that we use, we would basically purchase that amount from Microsoft at, at the end of every year. So it really hasn't been much changed to our environment. We pretty much stay pretty flat. But, but the amount for that is 88,352.05 per year. It is budgeted. So this is just that formality of approving the contract and moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Commissioners, any questions for our IT Director? What's, with no further questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
We approve the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement as presented. Is it just the chairman to sign?
If I believe so, yes.
Then I'd also authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and authorize signature. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like we're with Microsoft for three years, Tim. Good job.
Good.
I hear you. Okay, that is a discussion and approval of amended Joint Powers Telecommunication Board Agreement to add the county as a member of the board. And with us again for this topic is Mr. Knight. Mr. Knight, floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We started this process just about a year ago of trying to get onto the Joint Powers Telecom Board as a member. Their mission is in line with making sure that the government entities in this area have reliable fiber connectivity between themselves and, and internet connectivity. They also work with local internet service providers to lease fiber to them to help improve their networks and to improve that connectivity for economic development and, and our community to better that. And so when we started that, we put together a proposal that, that I took to both cities. I worked with Mr. De Leon and, and his staff. And we, we kind of put together a proposal of what, what we wanted to do. Both cities had some reservations to what we were asking. They felt that we needed some skin in the game, in some sort of financial contribution, and also kind of that they wanted a member of the, of the Commission to be on that board. And so after working with them and, and meeting several times with different representatives from the cities and their attorneys, we've kind of come up with an agreement that we believe that will pass. It has not been presented to either city council yet. We're starting with you. So there is a possibility that it could change. But I believe that we have something that everybody, that has addressed all the concerns that came up during those meetings. And so a couple of things that, that are different from the original that we talked about last year was that instead of a board member from the Commission being optional, but they would want a representative from the Board of County Commission to be a member of that board. We eliminated the, the term limits to allow members to be on that board for a longer period of time. And, and Section 10 is probably the biggest one. And that's that our membership is contingent for a contribution of $360,000 to be contributed within a 10-year period, basically. If we don't participate with that kind of funding within that 10-year period, then we would be eliminated from the board at that point. The way I look at it is I'm sure there's going to be some project that occurs within the next 10 years that, where we could contribute this kind of money through either grants or direct contribution. I know as we start to look at the developments out by the airport with the industrial complex that they're talking about, or some other things, I believe this would be pretty simple to, or something that the Commission will be interested in doing. But even if we don't do that, we do have a voice for that 10-year period. And if at some point we decide not to contribute, then I guess we would be off the board. So I really don't see a downside to doing this. I see a lot of positives, especially as we start moving forward. And as Lauren's talked about, you know, improving connectivity into our community and, and some of the things that they're doing, I think this is, us being on the board really helps them being able to expand their vision a little bit. Most of the growth is happening in the county. So I think it's a really good thing. So I'm, I'm asking for you to approve it and to have the chairman sign, so we can take it to the two cities.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
I obviously have no problem with what, what we want to do here. But the question is for John De Leon, this is a 10-year, we're obligating a future commission, future commissions to this document. Are there any problems with that, John?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Johnson, this, there's actually, as Tim noted, the future commissions do not have to give any money. So if a future commission decides to contribute the $360,000, that would be their choice. If they decide not to, they can also decide not to. And simply, as a matter of default, the, the commission would no longer, Sweetwater County would no longer be part of the board. So if, for example, they could choose every year here and after to not contribute even $1. And so that's why Tim is identifying that it's, there's really not a lot to lose, because they can learn their value over their, over the 10 years, and they can decide if they truly want to be part of this board or not. So it's got a large window to acclimate to the, the Joint Powers Board and decide what they want to do.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
Um, I just want to say thank you to Tim for following this through. When I was appointed over a year ago, this was something that we had talked about. And even before then, when I was an appointee to this board from the city of Rock Springs. So I think that this is a good compromise. I think that the 10-year window, as Mr. De Leon just pointed out, is a good, is a good starting point, and it allows us to work. And I, I think that this is a great option. And I'm excited that we're moving forward with this. I think it's really important.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Other comments, Commissioners? John?
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing that I would add is that with, Tim identified that the two cities still have to approve this. Once the two cities do make their approval, the next step in the process is that this document would then go to the Attorney General's Office. With the Joint Powers Board, it has to receive approval from the Attorney General's Office. So there is a possibility that when it is submitted to the AG, that there are some modifications that weren't foreseen. That being said, we have already submitted in advance this, this, this document to the AG for preliminary review. And so it would be a secondary and final review. So I just wanted to point out that possibility to the Commission.
Thank you, John. You answered my question. So appreciate that. Other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Tim, is that contribution, does that need to be cashed, or can it be in kind? So say you're lending expertise as a county employee to a project or something, does that count towards it? Or is it just, just cash? Not, you said that it'd probably be pretty easy to, to meet that threshold anyway, but just checking on that.
Uh, yeah, we discussed that at length, but that was, they do want cash.
I mean, that's real deal.
The real deal, yeah. They said they have expertise they're contributing to, so they, they didn't feel like mine was that much better, so.
They don't have, they don't have a Tim Knight there. They, I don't know what they're thinking, but.
They've got some good people, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
I have one question. That's all right for Tim. Um, Tim, so now in that $360,000, it's clear that it's just, whenever over the next 10 years, we're not going to be getting a surprise bill, hey, it's your time for your contribution. Just, we have to make those appropriations sometime in the next 10 years.
That's correct. So what I anticipate is that there'll be a project that comes up that, that the board would approach the Commission for help funding that project. That's probably how it will happen. There won't, there won't be a bill that happens. It'll probably come in that form.
I appreciate that, Tim. And I, I'll just draw there. I think as we start looking at the need to diversify our economy and trying to find and recruit folks, this is a key, a key issue. So I think it's important that we are involved some level.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? No further questions, Commissioners. What's your pleasure regarding?
Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the third amended and restated Fiber Optics Telecommunication Cooperative Joint Powers Agreement between the city of Rock Springs, the city of Green River, and Sweetwater County, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Knight, and thank you, Mr. De Leon, for your input. Moving on, on to our next agenda item with the Green River Star, which is an ad for the Veterans Edition and the Green River Star. And with us today is Mr. Martin, David Martin. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I'll try to make this as brief as possible. We're publishing a special Veterans Edition that like we do every year. And last year, the county commissioners placed, placed an ad. And we're curious if you'd like to run the same ad this year. The cost would be $191.25. Commissioner Johnson, I gave you the wrong price by about 50 cents, if I recall correctly.
You call, you do recall correctly.
And the size would be two columns by seven and a half inches.
Okay, thank you, David. I think you had an opportunity to hand out a brochure to everybody before the meeting, David.
Um, some of the, some of the Commissioners I ran into while I was at the courthouse earlier, I did. There's also a copy in with your packet, I believe.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Martin, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Several years ago, Sweetwater County made the decision that we're going to support veterans, not only in Sweetwater County, but throughout Southwest. And we've done a great job of that. And I think this is, even though it's going to cost us a little bit less than I anticipated, the, I, I think it's money well spent, and I think we should approve this and go forward with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other comments, Commissioners? With no comments, Commissioner Johnson, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the ad that's going to go in the Veterans Edition and the Green River Star to the $291.50.
We have a motion to approve the ad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussions? With that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, David. We appreciate you doing this for the veterans, and we're definitely, definitely supportive of the cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. You have a good day and be safe, please.
You too.
Thank you. Moving forward, we have under Tab M, we have a Joint Travel and Tourism Board Appointment. And Commissioners, it's under your tab. We can see that we have a three-year term, and we have an appointment due to the expiring term of Lyndon McGovern, effective 11/120. Ms. McGovern is eligible for reappointment, and there are two new applicants. Ms. McGovern is eligible for reappointment, and there are two new applicants, Lance Barrett and Kyle Burnus. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
I have a question. I assume that Linda McGovern is willing to continue to serve, you know?
I do not know. I did not reach out, I'm sorry. Other questions? There's a comment submitted that, yes, she submitted an application for consideration, so she is willing to re-serve, Mr. Johnson. Other questions? What's your privilege, Commissioners, regarding the board appointment for travel, joint travel and tourism?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I'd make a motion that we reappoint Linda McGovern to that position.
We have a motion to reappoint Linda McGovern to the Joint Travelism, Joint Travel and Tourism Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, tab N is a request to restack position of the assessor's office, and with us is our assessor, Mr. Davis. Good morning, Mr. Davis, and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Go ahead, the floor is yours, Mr. Davis.
Okay, one thing I want to make clear is I'm not asking to, for a decision on this position from the board today. I'm just making you aware that I'd like to fill the position in my office that recently retired. This retirement actually happened at a really good time for us budget-wise. In the wintertime, I pull my field crew in just simply for safety concerns. I don't want them out driving on icy roads. I don't want them out walking on icy sidewalks either. So in the wintertime, I'm able to pull those in to help get going on all of our other winter activities, which are personal property renditions, veterans exemptions, the widow's exemptions, we just sent out our affidavits. All of that office work, I have those four additional bodies that come in that helped me out tremendously during this time of year. I do feel like I need the position to continue to meet my statutory obligations, and I did include a letter that explains those positions. But I also understand I'm the one telling you your budget is going to be short due to the, due to the decrease in valuation, and I have to help be part of that solution rather than to increase the problem. When we get to the point where it's time for a decision to be made, I'd like to come back in front of you with HR and have the cost estimates for you to consider. In a perfect world, I'd ask to fill the full-time position with another full-time employee. But right now, nothing's perfect. So I think we have to consider other options. What I'd like the board to consider, when I do come back, is to fill this position with a part-time seasonal person, one, maybe two. What I'd like to do is have this seasonal person from April to October. This person would work under 30 hours a week, so there was no benefits. It would allow one of my more experienced staff members to actually come into the office and work during those summer months on the, on the other duties that we have that come up during those summer months. But at this point, again, don't need a decision. I'd just like you to consider that as we get closer to having decent budget numbers, which I talked to Commissioner Wendling yesterday, and I'm thinking I'll be able to present to you updated valuation numbers probably at the second meeting in January. I think I'll have everything from the Department of Revenue at that point where I can actually present. So again, today, no decision, just information. I think as elected officials, again, we have to be part of the solution to some of these budget issues, and I think this part-time thing, I've reached out to former employees, we've done some research, and the part-time seasonal stuff did work at one point in the county assessor's office. It was what had happened is they had got behind on their rebuild, revow schedule as well, so they had hired some part-time people to have additional people out in the field. And I think we can continue to do that. At one point, they didn't have to do it anymore because the numbers got good enough that they were okay. We're kind of in that position as well, but I do think we have to keep up on them. We don't want to, there was a time when we were chasing those numbers, and the Department of Revenue, the State Board of Equalization, we're really cracking down on that with every assessor across the state. So I don't want to get in a position where my obligations to, to my oversight agencies is being compromised. So again, no decision today, just information for you to consider for next time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioners, any questions?
Not so much a question, but just a, I guess a statement, Chairman Wendling, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right. Hey, Dave, Assessor Davis, I just want to thank you. We've also discussed this and and I, I just want to thank you for your willingness to look outside the box a little bit in these solutions. And I appreciate you really looking into that. I, I really want to thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other Commissioners? Well, thank you, Mr. Assessor Davis, for coming forward and visiting with us about it. Appreciate the information. And I know when you, when you or any other supervisor comes forward to request positions due to our hire freeze, everybody will work really close with our HR person and looking at the, that particular resolution and look at all those options and answer those questions as they come forward. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate you as elected official. One of several taking the lead and choosing to do that and that type of thing. So I really appreciate this. It gives us some opportunity to think about it. And I think also gives us some opportunity to review some numbers and do some budgeting stuff before we make any decisions in this particular case, okay?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Okay, I thank you very much. Other comments, Commissioners, before we bid our assessor a great day? No comments. Mr. Davis?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye. Okay, moving onwards, let's do this. We're about 15 minutes ahead. Would Commissioners like a 15-minute break? Gene, does your schedule allow us to do that?
I'm sure that is mercy.
Thank you.
I appreciate recognizing that, Gene. Thank you. I think we need to take the break.
All right, we'll take a 15-minute break and be back here at 10:55 for Mr. Legursky. Thank you.
Okay, Jim. All right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and continue on with our agenda. Next up is under table, first member commissioners, we amended the agenda with several items, so they'll stay under table. The first item is a change order number two for the Sweetwater County courthouse courthouse roof replacement, and I believe Mr. Legursky is with us. Gene?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Commissioner Whimmling. What you have before you is a change order number two for the courthouse. It is a new no cost change order. It's for time only because of the murder trial and the three murder trial and the subsequent other trial that got postponed. The roofer was creating a lot of noise, so we just had him pull off for a little bit. He will be done this week, but with that, we had a original change order was to extend it in April was to extend it through October 31st, and with the noise he was creating, we just decided it would be better to finish it this week.
Okay, so we have that change order. Is there any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Legursky regarding this change order number two? With no further questions, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Make a motion that we approve the requested change order, change order number two as this explained by Mr. Legursky.
And authorize chairman to sign?
Yeah, I said that.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Legursky, you're up again, and it's award of the engineering design and construction administration contract to William H. Smith and Associates. Mr. Legursky, the I should start saying the screen is yours. Gene?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, again, this is a engineering design and construction administration contract. It's for Lester Drive, Pyramid Drive, Folsom Drive out north of Rock Springs. Those roads are in need of repair, and what we did is we went out for RFPs a couple months ago. As you can see in the attached letter, we had four RFPs. We graded them by our committee, and William H. Smith or WHS was actually the low or the high score of those. We actually scored it two different ways. We did an average of everybody's score, and then I also looked at, because everybody's scores a little bit different, where they placed in each individual score, and they actually got four out of the five first place votes. But this is for is for them to go out and survey, figure out the drainage, and how to reconstruct those roads in that area to make them last longer. It's about 1.5 miles of road. Dibby Duck, the longest road, I believe, is Lester, and then Pyramid and Folsom are about 0.4 miles apiece, and Lester is about 0.8 miles.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Legursky. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Legursky?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
Two things, Gene. The first one is, what was the, what was the amount of the award? And I'd like, in light of some of the things that have been going on in the county, I'd like you to explain what, what that committee, who that committee is, and what types of things they look at, and how do they arrive at who should get these, this type of a contract for professional services.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Those are great questions, and I'm so glad you thought about them. Mr. Legursky, go ahead.
So the total contract award is $181,170, and that is broken up into three different areas. The design is $49,740. That includes everything from the initial survey, the different designs, the plan sets going through the bid. The construction administration is $114,960, and that's for actually dealing with the contractor, doing all the testing, the surveying that needs to be done, and watching the contractor on a day-to-day basis. Now, that one fluctuates depending on how long it takes the contractor. WHS put in 1,080 hours of time in there, which I feel is plenty. They have, all of these are costs not to exceed, so that price could go down. It just depends on the contract we get and the length of time. I also always in these contracts, because you don't know what exactly you're gonna find until you actually start doing the geotactical testing, I throw in a 10% contingency, and that 10% contingency was $16,470 added into this contract that I would have done regardless of who got it. How this is scored is they turn in RFPs, and the RFPs are based on a center criteria that I've laid out, what the job is. I try to describe it to the best I can to them. They go out and look at it and put a proposal, proposal together to do everything from the start all the way through the bidding and all the way through watching it, not knowing any more than what they're actually looking at. So we actually graded on a criteria. Sorry, let me, my cellphone keeps ringing here. We graded on a criteria that's basically based on 252 points. The main highlight is they have project-specific criteria, and those are past experience, what the skill set is for the project manager that they're gonna have and all their support staff. So we actually look at all the previous jobs that they have done and combine that in and score those. Now, the scoring, each committee person puts those into a score, and then they're weighted. Each question we have, and I think in this one, there's five different questions, and those are weighted depending on how important we think those are. Like first, for giving an example, is the firm's past experience on similar projects. That's weighted as a three, because sometimes you have newer firms that might not have as much experience, but they still have good capable people. But the project manager's skill and experience is weighted as a five. So as they put in the scores, those are aggregated out over a weighting criteria. Typically, I use people that are in the building that have construction experience or construction knowledge, and I always, I don't wanna call them wild cards, but I like throwing a couple other people in there that see stuff differently than the technical people do. You know, they look at different stuff and get a kind of a breath of, I'd say, fresh air in the same committee. So like I said, we hand it out to five different people. They grade them independently. They bring them back to me within a week or two, or whatever that deadline is. I average all the scores up and present it to you, basically. But basically, we have project-specific criteria, how good the proposal is, is it concise? Does it follow the directions that we had? What details do they have? Do they have anything where they thought outside the box on this project that they bring to the table? We also grade them on the location that they are from the project. So we have a zero to 50 mile radius, a 50 to 150 mile radius, and 150 miles up, trying to give local engineering firms a little bit more point advantage if they're closer. Cost proposal is a, is a thing in there, with most RFPs. Cost is one of the last things you look at, but it's still important. So that's graded, and is it, basically, we don't grade them based on each other. We grade them, is it within normal and expected ranges? And how is it broken down? Well, they break it down so we can actually figure out what's in there. We also do past performance, and we do past performance if they have any subconsultants. And then we also see, can they meet the schedule that I laid out originally in the RFP? So it's quite an extensive process. You know, I wanna say there's probably 20 questions that everybody, 20, 22 questions that everybody has, and we go forward from there.
Gene, this five, the five people you get on that committee, does that vary from, from proposal to proposal? Or are they always the same five, five people?
Three of them, three of them are usually the same, Chairman Johnson, because they're people that have construction experience and, and have a knowledge of that. The other two always vary. One of them that's always on there is myself. I don't feel it's fair. If I'm, if I'm gonna work with them, I need to grade their proposals also.
I surely agree with that, but the last part of that question was, are they all county employees that are on that committee?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, any other questions? Any other questions? With that, no further questions. Commissioners, what's your, what's your pleasure regarding this contract?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Make a motion to award the engineering design and construction administration contract to William H. Smith and Associates as presented by Mr. Legursky.
And allow chairman to sign?
And allow the chairman that all required documentation.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Gene. You're still up for our next agenda item, which is, I believe, the co-op agreement, and it's gonna be for federal project NHPPI-1802200. Gene, floor is yours.
So I'll just kinda wrap all three of these next co-op agreements together. They're all the same agreement with YDOT. They're for different tonnages of recycled asphalt material that they're willing to give it, and they're at different stockpile locations. Basically, what these are is agreements for YDOT. As they're progressing east, about four years ago, I showed, shared some interest during one of their STIP meetings that I will take as much recycled asphalt mixed material as they can give me to redo the roads out in the county, kinda like we did on the Browns Park Road. Just to keep in mind, right now, I believe all three of these are for about 126,000 tons of recycled asphalt material, or rap. 4,500 tons covers one mile of road, 24 foot wide. So, you know, this can do quite a bit of miles of road, and, you know, they're willing to give it to us because they can't use it. Even if they put it in their plant mix statement, they can only use about 15%. And if not, it just goes to waste in shoveling material or hauled off, and we can surely use this, especially on the east side of the county.
Thank you, Gene. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Legursky?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
If I understood, Gene, he'd like to wrap these all three together, but all of the projects have different project numbers. Is that what you're asking for, Gene, or?
No, just Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner Johnson, just the explanation of all of them. They will need to be voted on separately because they're attached to separate projects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you, Gene. So any other questions for Mr. Legursky? Question for you, Gene, for me. With this road mill, I believe, is it going to be all placed in one place, or is it gonna be able to be placed nearer to projects that will help with cost?
113,000 tons of it will be placed out at the North Baxter Plant Site, right at the airport road on the north side. The next, another 13,000 tons will be placed at the Bitter Creek Interchange on the north side, and then subsequent projects, I've been working with YDOT to place them at various locations throughout the interstate where we can find room.
Great, thank you. That will save us some hauling costs in the future.
Yes, it will.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Mr. Legursky, commissioners? Okay, let's take each one separately, and let's do this. We'll start with the first one that's on your agenda. The, I'll read the last four numbers, 2200. So commissioners, your pleasure regarding the co-op agreement, federal project ending in 2200.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the first one.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Screen is yours.
I make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement between YDOT and Sweetwater County for rap material from federal project NHPPI-1802200.
And authorized?
And authorized, chairman to sign.
That's what I thought I heard. We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Next up will be the co-op agreement that ends in 22004. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, you're muted, you're muted.
I think you misread that project number. It's, you said 22004. I think it's 2204. It's just one.
You're right, you're right, Commissioner Johnson. 2204. Thank you. What's your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement for rap material from federal project NHPPI-I802204, and allow the chairman to sign all needed documentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Now, we'll go to the last one is federal project ending in 3147. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement for rap material from federal project NHPPI-I803147, and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. We have a motion to approve and authorize signature. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to the next item under O is, I believe, the facility condition assessment report phase two. Mr. Legursky, the screen is yours.
Mr. Chairman, this is just an update of the, the facility conditions assessment that Duke Solutions at Halford came in and did back in September. Interesting story on this is, they came in and did phase one in October last year, and we hit a cold spell, and they got trapped here for two days. So when I called them up in July to do this, they said, there's no way they're coming in October. Can we come in September? I said, sure, no problem. We may have made out of snow. They came in during the last couple days of September when the snow hit. They got rerouted to Riverton, back down to Denver, and then drove from Denver to Rock Springs. And you gotta remember, these guys are out of San Antonio, Texas. So they, I don't know if they'll come up next year or not. We'll see. But anyway, they did a great job as usual. You can actually see that we did two of the buildings down at the Southwest Counseling there on Aitney Way. We did the Senior Center, Facility Roosevelt School, a couple buildings out the Roosevelt Events Complex. We grabbed two of the Parks and Rec buildings. We did all three library buildings. We did that museum. Overall, as stated, the buildings were in good condition. They're even commented on the age of the buildings and how they don't look as bad as they should. One of the interesting things, if you actually look at the facility condition index that they gave everything, the buildings last year were about a four. These ones are about an average of a 16, so they are a little bit more on the wear and tear. Nothing to worry about until they get to about a 50. So if we keep up with our preventive maintenance program, keep doing the maintenance that we're doing, they should last a long time. So I gave you the guys the executive summary. Each one of these buildings has its own report to it that's about 150 pages long. If you guys care to see those, I can send those to you or whatever, but I wanted to give you an update and say thank you for allowing this to be budgeted, because it goes a long way. say thank you for allowing this to be budgeted because it, it goes a long ways until our planning.
Okay, thank you, Gene. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, not a question, but a comment. And, uh, that would be, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Gene, this is, uh, as I looked through this data prior to the meeting, it's amazing how comprehensive this is and, and I could only imagine what a great planning tool it is. And I just think this is, uh, something that will really be able to help in the concept of our strategic planning and long-term financial budgeting based upon this. So really appreciate you sharing the information and man, uh, you know, not a big engineer building guy in my own life, but it, it, it's amazing the information to share. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other Commissioners, any comments?
Chairman, can I make a comment back to that?
Yes, go ahead.
The nice thing about this too is they all have it in a spreadsheet and this is, uh, soon to be uploaded into Duke Solutions. And then we'll get, hopefully get the other, um, people on board so they can start entering, uh, maintenance, things like we have been for the past three months here at Sweetwater County.
Very good. Thank you, Gene. Look forward to doing that. Look forward to using this as we move forward and this is, uh, good timing because where we're headed budgetably for the next couple of years, this will be a huge, very important piece of information, um, to support, uh, as we move forward. So thank you very much, uh. And, and remind those guys, if they would, uh, fly into Southwest Regional Airport, they probably wouldn't have to be detoured anywhere other than by the, uh, SIM plot.
Mr. Chairman, they were actually trying to get, they went from, uh, uh, San Antonio to Denver and they were trying to get to here and got rerouted to Riverton, spent the night, gambled a little bit, flew back to Denver and then had to drive here.
Okay, so we'll give, we'll give them an A plus for an effort, okay?
Yeah, they, they saw more while, they said they saw more while than they cared to, is all they'll say.
Do we have to worry about them moving here?
Uh, no. Um, when they first, uh, called me and they said, hey, we're going to drive over South Pass, um, what does that mean with chain law in effect? And I told them to stay put.
Thank God they called before they left. Anyhow, thank you, Mr. Legursky. It was, um, good to see this report and good to see how we're going to use it. So, um, with that, uh, we'll say thank you for being here and, uh, you have a safe day and appreciate your contributions. Moving on, Tab P is a industrial siding update and with us is Mr. Bangham and he's here to, to present that. And I know that our, uh, Assistant County Attorney, John DeLeone, has been a huge part of that as well as anybody else. So, uh, Eric, feel free to bring anybody else that you wish so. Uh, the screen is yours, Eric. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, appreciate, uh, your time today. Um, this is just a brief overview of, um, since they've changed the industrial siding rules and we've had a lot of these back-to-back in the last few years. And some of the projects have actually been, well, project. Not, not should, not pluralize that. Gateway West has actually completed and we received all the money from, from that project, but just as you stated, uh, Chairman Wenling, um, there's a lot of members and moving parts to these. These are very time-consuming, the way the state has set these up. Um, there's two hearings involved. There's a pre and then there's a regular hearing. Um, you've been involved. Uh, of course, Chairman Johnson's, has been involved with a lot of these, uh, projects, even from when, uh, under the old rules. I was with, uh, Chairman, uh, Commissioner Johnson when, um, when we were under the old rules too. So there, such as SIM plot was, uh, industrial siding cherry, choke cherry, all of those. Um, Commissioner Shaneville was also able to, to be a part of this last one. Commissioner Lloyd's been involved, uh, and Commissioner Smith. So appreciate everybody's time, uh, and like I said, and probably the biggest thanks goes to, um, uh, Mr. John DeLeone, who's a great team player. He, uh, I come from the planning world and land use and he comes from the, uh, legal world. And combined together, we run things that we always try to improve on as we go through this process. So with that, um, I also want to state that, um, a, a special thanks, as much as this pains me, is to Commissioner Johnson. Uh, he was a great mentor through, uh, all of this process. And I just want to thank him for, uh, everything and, uh, I've learned a lot from that, so. Even though his, uh, choice of colleges were not that great, but we'll just move on. This is, can everybody see my screen, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, great. And I'm waiting for the rebuttal from, uh, Commissioner Johnson when I'm done with this. So believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm ready for it. So, um, there's a lot, and this is kind of educate the public also on this, um. Sometimes when you hear a total cost of the project and we think we're getting all this, this amount of money, um, it's based on actually, um, the cost of estimated materials. So it's not the total cost of the project. It's a cost, you base this two point seven six percent of the total estimated materials cost. And so sometimes you'll hear a project is hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's two point seven six on that and it's not, it's on the materials cost. And then what they break that down is to, once you get that, and usually you get it in the application or from the applicant is, um, so take this one for instance, which was Gateway West. Um, seven point nine million dollars were available. And we'll start with this one. Um, usually what the industrial siding request is, is that we work on an MOU with whatever affected area that can be, and I think it's fifty to seventy-five miles of around where the project is. And so with Gateway West, there was a lot of counties involved on the seven point nine million carbon, uh, when we, we meet with them, we negotiate these amounts. And, uh, usually you go in a little bit higher and then you negotiate down to an amount to under the seven point nine million. If you, uh, go above that, um, then, or you can't come to an agreement. What happens is the industrial siding decides and that can end up being a lower amount. So you always want to go into these things, uh, wanting to sign an MOU. So with Gateway, uh, three point seven six five uh, went to carbon on the MOU, three point eight, Sweetwater County. Albany had two hundred thirty-seven thousand and Natrona was a hundred thousand dollars. And like I said, these were all the, the affected communities by the Industrial Siding Council. So when you look at this, this is, you know, you got the pie of seven point nine million and then you divide up that pie carbon, and then you have all those, you can see all those municipalities in there, Albany, Natrona, and then Sweetwater County. And who was involved with Sweetwater County at that time was the Fire District One. You had the Food Bank, Sheriff's Office, and which is, the Sheriff's Office has actually, uh, been on every single one of these, uh, applications that have come through. You had the Ambulance Board, Memorial Hospital, Road and Bridge, Land Use, and City of Rock Springs and the Town of Wamsetter. So when you start dividing up these things, you will see that just, I wanted to go and just kind of show you as far as, uh, this is what was requested under Gateway West and was also awarded. In other words, when we went through this hearing, nothing was reduced. So the, the total amount of money that came to Sweetwater County was three point eight million. Uh, some things that we got out of it and we, also I got to thank Christina because what she does is she goes into Munis and sets these up as projects. One thing that came up out of Gateway South was, is how are you guys monitoring the projects? And I was, I was able to say that, hey, we were, we actually, we monitor this. Christina puts these into projects. You can look it up on Gateway West and show each one of these entities that did receive money. Um, that the money went out to the towns and the cities. Of course, when it gets to the cities and towns like Wamsetter, Rock Springs and Green River, we don't account for it then. Under this project, Green River didn't request any money um, because of how far away Gateway West was. So they had no requests on that. But you can see here, the um, Food Bank was able to get some money. They were very thankful for that, ninety-one thousand for, uh, increase in food distribution during these projects. The Sheriff Office, uh, for overtime and additional deputy. The Ambulance Board, uh, was awarded this money for new ambulance. Type, and then, um, for the hospital, this issue with uninsured workers when they come into the area and Title twenty-five, they were able to receive three hundred ninety thousand dollars. City of Rock Springs had a nu- number of, uh, different street impacts, water and sewer utilities. They also utilize a formula where they take their total budget, uh, divided by the total population, and then when they have this increase of population, uh, whatever they come out to a number wise from the total budget, they can multiply that and see what cost per person would be. So they kind of use a hybrid on this one. And then the Town of Wamsetter, I asked, was asking for police officer, fire EMS personnel, things, street overlay. And then they used a water and sewer impact formula is where they came up with that. Um, Gene was able to use, uh, there were numerous, uh, roads associated with Gateway West and there were upgrades to those roads. And you can see that when you go into that, um, that those roads were improved. Um, the other option you always have with these projects is you can do, uh, maintenance agreements. Um, Rocky Mount Power is kind of steering away a little bit from those, um, just from discussions I've had with Rod Fisher. Um, so we typically, if there are going to be roadway impacts, we like to seek those. Trans-West was another project that came through. Um, this one is on hold. For this one, there was twenty-four point six million dollars. This is probably where we got the most money. Um, between, uh, Sweetwater and Carbon, it was around a little over eight million dollars, but Sweetwater County did, was approved for five point three million dollars. And Town of Wamsetter was involved, the Sheriff, Fire, Sweetwater County Fire, High Desert Rural Health District, Solid Waste District Number Two, and the Wamsetter Baptist Church was also a part of this. And then you can see in Carbon County what, uh, municipalities were also requesting. So the Sheriff for overtime, um, because you got to remember, these are remote areas of the county. Trans-West kind of clips the county, comes in and out between Wamsetter and, um, uh, Wamsetter and, sorry, not one, Sweetwater County and Carbon County, kind of goes back and forth. So it's in a very rural section of the county. So response times were, um, can be strained for this. That was showed, uh, when we showed numbers for Gateway South, the Sheriff was showing that uh, the, the amount of calls. So we were able to actually show numbers for the Sheriff's Department that they were, um, that they were impacted heavily during Gateway West with all the amount of EMS calls that were increased. Sweetwater County Fire, uh, requ- is requesting, um, two firefighters, a wildland fire engine, equipment and training was awarded seven hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. High Desert Rural Health District, because of the additional people, is, was requesting money for additional hours associated with, and associated maintenance with the facility with those hours for two hundred forty-six thousand. The Solid Waste District, one point one million, uh, scales a new hire. Um, they don't, and dumpsters and shippings, uh, the space that's going to be utilized for basically their garbage and things like that associated with the project. So they, um, got a pretty good substantial amount of money. Wamsetter Baptist Church was indigent. Costs, uh, thirty thousand dollars. And then the Town of Wamsetter, uh, received, well, hasn't received this money. I, I want to say that this, as far as this project goes, the, um, this project is on hold. I did receive a letter, so we're looking at twenty twenty-two is when this project will start, is projected second quarter twenty twenty-two. Or twenty twenty-one, excuse me. Town of Wam, no, it's twenty twenty-two. Town of Wamsetter, two point seven million dollars for their EMS, Fire and Police and their Road and Bridge and Public Works. Then we moved on to ExxonMobil. Some interesting things happened there. Now we're on another side of the county, the extreme other side, which is Lincoln and Sweetwater. And three point one million, which Lincoln, uh, signed an MOU for one point five, about roughly one point six, and then Sweetwater, one point five million. And these were, as far as, uh, this is when we worked with the Town of Granger, Rock Springs and Green River was a part of this. And then as far as county agencies, the Sheriff and Fire were involved with this. And then Lincoln County, you can see the different, uh, Cokeville, Diamondville, LaBarge, Opale and Cammer. This one, we were actually reduced amounts, um, when we went through the hearing process. Uh, this was done by phone. We were not in person. This is right in the middle of when the COVID outbreak happened. And so we, we did it by phone. We were actually present before the board. Not all the board members were there and we were reduced by twenty percent. And so, you know, the Sheriff asked for some overtime in a patrol vehicle of five hundred forty-eight thousand, but was reduced to four hundred thirty-nine. This project is also on hold, so, uh, have not been given a date on this, so I'm not clear as to when this project will start. As far as Sweetwater County Fire, um, so they were awarded two hundred eighty-three thousand, Town of Granger, ninety-eight thousand, Green River, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, and City of Rock Springs, two hundred sixty-two thousand. For a total of still, um, one point two million dollars for that project. Uh, the Ginner Expansion, this is, uh, just in September. Uh, this is just a a couple of months ago, um, total, this was only Sweetwater County, so, um, we didn't have other counties involved with this one. And we were looking at three point one nine million total available. These were the different entities involved, uh, Rock Springs and Green River, obviously. And then the Sweetwater County Agencies, you had the Sheriff, the Fire, Joint Communication, Southwest Counseling, uh, we were able to get them involved with this one. And same with Joint Communication Board, um, there were some coverage issues with antennas, and so they joined us with that one. And then we saw, and you see this in the applications too, and you see it, uh, health services are strained from these projects. So that's why we had Council, Southwest Counseling and the hospital again was able to join us on that one. And so with this one, uh, we were awarded the, uh, full amount. Um, so as far as mag chloride, that Road and Bridge was able to get a hundred forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, seventy thousand for the Sheriff and nine hundred sixty-four thousand uh, for four additional firefighters, one used piece of, uh, rescue fire equipment. So nine hundred sixty-four thousand for that. And Joint Communication Board, this is for a portable radio system. There's some areas, lack of coverage out by Ginner. So they were able to get that. And then again, for the hospital, we had uninsured workers and Title twenty-five and uh, high acuity and long-term patients, we were able to get two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars awarded to them. Southwest Counseling, uh, increased outpatient additional social detox and crisis stabilization beds. They were able to, uh, they were approved for that request for two hundred twenty-seven thousand. And then the City of Green River, um, was both that and Rock Springs. They were doing impact formulas I described. They do their total budget by population and then that's how they came out with these numbers. They did a little bit of hybrid too, so there was also whatever impacts they came up with, uh, some of their services, EMS type services. So three hundred, almost three hundred and thirty-nine thousand and six hundred fifty-two thousand for the Rock, City of Rock Springs. So the, the one that we just had that, um, Chairman Wenling was talking about, uh, was, was Gateway South. This, um, three point one nine million was available. Uh, so as far as the majority, the project, um, are building a big substation in there, so a lot of the project is in Carbon County. So they were able to, um, negotiate a four point five million out of, out of, uh, the total amount's wrong, but it's, uh, and then Sweetwater County was one point five seven million. And as far as this last request, we had the Sheriff Fire, Southwest Regional Airport joined us for the first time on request and the Town of Wamsetter. The, um, so I think Chairman Wenling said it earlier that, uh, Wamsetter was reduced. I do want to express and, um, that, and I stated, uh, at the meeting, both John and I stayed at the meeting after it occurred. And, uh, I did talk to a couple of council members and just expressed a little bit of frustration with some of these hearings is consistency. Um, it's very difficult to plan for these. You, you think you're all planned and ready to go and then, um, uh, different things happen at these and I'd just like to see a little bit more consistency when we go to these so we know more what to expect and what to request. There's not a lot of, um, guidance, I would say. Um, so uh, Wamsetter was reduced. Uh, they will have an opportunity. You have to wait till construction starts. There was a issue with some of the numbers they were stating in the hearing weren't adding up when they made their decision. And we feel that, um, I would like to see the Town of Wamsetter, um, and the county supporting them, uh, going, uh, next year. And going before the, requesting a hearing to get, uh, allocated the full amount. The Sheriff, uh, Fire and Southwest Regional Airport were all received, uh, approval for their request. A hundred forty thousand for two additional patrol vehicles. The Fire did receive three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for a one. Uh, they did not receive funding for four additional. Uh, they did not receive funding for four additional firefighters, uh, originally his requests were around eight to 900,000 dollars and he were reduced down when we were negotiating. And so that is just for the vehicle. Southwest Regional Airport, um, we were like, why, why were they impacted? Well, under Gateway West, uh, they have to store the helicopters. And so it was an additional strain on the regional airport. So, um, Devin came in, Mr. Brubaker came in and requested 115,000 to remodel an existing structure out there to facilitate the storage of the helicopters. So this is, um, this is all the monies that you can see, um, that have been, uh, approved. So total impact fees, uh, approved. So Fire District One, 156,000, Food Bank, 91,000, the Baptist Church, 30,000. So the sheriff out of all, all through all the projects, and I have them listed under there under projects involved, 1.6 million. The fire department is 2.4 million, uh, has been approved. And then ambulance board, 219, the hospital, 653,000. Southwest Counseling, 227,000, Joint Communication, 90, and 1 million for a road and bridge. The land use office, 50,000 on the one project, the airport, 115,000. So 1.4 million for Rock Springs and 467,000 for Green River and the town of Wamsetter. Uh, 4.1 million dollars and Town of Granger, 98,000. So out of all these projects, what we've been approved for, um, is 12.8 million. And so that's why I wanted to present these numbers, uh, publicly. So every, the public knows and that you as a board also know all of the hard work that's gone on through the years. Just in the last three years, 12.8 million has been approved. Now, because of projects other haven't started, four of these, four out of the five have not. We've only received 3.48 million, but we've received 3.48 million, which is, which is great. And, uh, you can see on that, uh, middle of the chart there of what we've received so far. So, uh, John, if anything that I'm missing that you, Mr. DeLeone, would like to add to it, appreciate it.
Eric, no, I, I think you've, uh, given a, a, um, thorough and excellent overview. So if there are any questions and that I can help with, I would be glad to.
Okay. Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Mr. DeLeone. Commissioners, any questions on the presentation?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
It, it's not a rebuttal, Eric. I just want the, uh, people of Sweetwater County to realize that this just doesn't happen. Uh, it's not automatic and it's a result of quality input from, uh, Eric and his staff and the people that are involved, such as fire and the sheriff. And, uh, they're the ones that prepare this information. And, and sometimes, uh, in a couple of cases, it didn't go too well, and I can explain those. But, uh, Eric and, uh, John, uh, it's, it's a credit to you people. Appreciate it very much. The people of Sweetwater County appreciate it. And in the two instances that I think where the, um, industrial siding council was wrong is the way they handled the mobile, uh, Exxon project with just automatically cutting it 20%. There was no logic in that. They were wrong about that, in my opinion. But they did, uh, come back and when they cut Wamsetter like that, at least they were, they were looking at it on an isolated basis and had some logic, I assume, uh, in why they cut Wamsetter. But that's the type of way, uh, that's the type of cutting that they should do and, and not, not the way they did it with, uh, with the mobile Exxon. That, that was, uh, just, there was no logic in that. But you can see, we're talking big dollars and, and that, uh, and it's a credit to the people that are representing Sweetwater County, uh, like Eric and John and the sheriff and the fire and all the mayors of the various communities like Wamsetter, Granger, Green River, Rock Springs. It's, it's a team effort and, uh, the stakes are high and I think, uh, Sweetwater County's done extremely well and it's a credit to you people. And Eric, I appreciate your kind words, but I had very little to do with it. I was just the spokesman. You are the ones that put the work together and, and made it happen. And, uh, other than the fact, the only thing I'd criticize you for is that I don't understand why you'd go to a second rate school like you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was going, Mr. Chairman. I was ready.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, any other comments?
I have a question if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, our questions. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, Eric, so like the Trans West is, is being delayed, somebody's being delayed. Is there a timeframe of, oh, it's been delayed six months, a year, two years where this is revisited and, um, redone? Or is it, is there any kind of set schedule with that?
So what they have to do, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Smith, is they have to, um, they have to let the industrial siding council know, uh, what their construction schedule will be. So that was a letter that I received on Trans West. So it's really the industrial siding council letting us know when that will occur. Um, as far as once too much time has gone, hasn't, I don't know the answer to that question. Like if it goes three or four more years and the cost of the project could go up and, uh, they would probably have to revisit something like that, but I don't know what's in their rules for that unless, um, John DeLeone knows. But, um, as far, they're just supposed to keep us, uh, know. And then the other thing that, uh, that we know is when they will start construction is they have to, by state law, send a letter to the county, letting them, letting us know that within 30, 60 days that, uh, when they will start.
Thank you.
So, um, Trans West, we were a little concerned about because there is a lot of money at stake and so, but, yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, the thing that I, I still don't quite understand of what's going on with Trans West and Gateway South, uh, why you would build two power lines that are going to, in the same direction and when you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars to do that. So I think that, uh, that delay, uh, is, is critical. And in my opinion, having been involved with many of these, uh, the costs obviously are going to be different. And I, I think it's going to have to be, I'm talking about Trans West. I think Trans West is going to have to be revisited and, and I don't think, uh, that we'd go down from the 5.3 million, but it probably would go up. But, uh, I think the whole project is questionable and see what happens in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other comments, John or Eric?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question if that's okay.
Mr. Lloyd.
All right, um, Eric, just kind of looking at these numbers, um, for whatever reason, one number that just jumped off the paper to me a little bit was how much our fire has been given. It looked like almost 2.4 million dollars over those projects. And comparatively speaking to any of the other projects, including some of the local actual towns, it seems to be quite high. And I just, um, and I don't know why that sticks out or bothers me, but it does. Because as we look into some of those numbers, it does say like an additional one fireman and an additional four firemen. So are we hiring additional people to fill for those fires or how is that working, Eric?
Go ahead, Eric.
Sure. And I don't want to speak for Mike, but, um, cause he's not on the call. And I did tell him that, uh, I was, I was going to be presenting today. But just to use an example of, uh, Gateway South and Jenner, his explanation was if he's going to run a fire track, well, they're both opposite sides of the county. And so that's why he's wanting four firefighters on one side and four on the other. One thing associated with both of those projects is housing. So they, he was able to acquire housing in Wamsetter. And he was also able to acquire housing, uh, west of Green River. And so what he has explained to me and in the process is he needs four people to run an engine. And so if you're going to have people responding to these areas, um, they are specific to the project. So these staff costs, um, of course, the engine when you buy, that's going to be longer than the, the cost of the project. But you need the equipment. If you're going to have four firefighters, you have to have the equipment. So what he's explained to me, this is, so one thing I should have stated, this is 12.8 million dollars to Sweetwater County, but it's specific to the projects. You cannot, it's like a grant. And I was talking to Christina about this. These, these are like grants. You have to use a specific to what you request. So hopefully that answers your question. A lot of the costs, I would say half to maybe two thirds of those costs are staff costs, but they are for the length of the project.
So they're soft costs.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think Roy, uh, the thing that we need to understand here is there's a conflict of interest, in my opinion, with industrial siding council. Cause there's, there's a certain pot, uh, pot of money available and, and they, and their objective is to make us justify what the impacts are going to be. And if we can't justify that, the, the state ends up with those taxes. So I, uh, I think we need to go forward and, and justify every penny that we can. Because it's obviously the impacts are going to be in Sweetwater County and these other counties surrounding these projects. And it's not in, I don't see where the state of Wyoming is impacted, but they, they're in, they're in, they have a conflict because they're after any amount of money that we can't justify as, as impacts to the county and the cities.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I'm, I'm going to comment, but not at the moment. I'm going to be the last one. So. Any other questions, commissioners? Roy, did you get your question answered?
I think so. I may just have to reach out to Mike and ask him questions.
Yeah, the, the thing of it is, is the request is for the duration of the project. So if it's any personnel, only for the duration of the project. So I call those soft costs. Now granted, there may be some equipment involved because, uh, it's additional work over and above, uh, standing ready for everything else. Um, the state understands that you can't buy a half of a fire engine. Do we buy the chassis? Do we buy the rigging? You can't buy a part of an engine and send half one way and send half the other way. So equipment does become a full cost and does, is retained by the requesting entity. So, um, that's the biggest reason for that and biggest cost. But, uh, they're, they're soft. I call it, reference them as soft costs because they, they, uh, are taken care of there. And once project's done, then those costs go away as well as that, uh, those, uh, employees. And that doesn't sound very good, but that's the reality of it. So that's the understanding behind that to best of my knowledge. I'll stand corrected if John or Eric want to add to it or say anything else.
No, John. Go ahead, John.
Uh, just, just to, uh, Commissioner Lloyd, just to, I guess, elaborate on that just a bit. There, at these hearings, there are, um, you know, uh, Eric and I do see, uh, the council making, um, certain, certain criticisms or recommendations or questions. And so part of the whole process is to, uh, especially when cuts have to be made, it's to make, uh, make assessments as to what particular projects and how much is asked for. I think that's, uh, that's where Eric as, uh, essentially project leader provides recommendations. And I think that's where as, uh, the chairman, uh, and Commissioner Johnson have identified as, as, uh, as commissioners, um, as these hearings get more and more difficult, uh, being, being part of that process provides, um, uh, the ability to, uh, represent the county and to pick particular projects and the amounts that are, that are necessary. And being responsive to what we're seeing in these hearings is necessary. So it's, um, uh, you know, it is tough because as Eric said, it's a moving target. But, um, we continue to make adjustments and, uh, we'll have to continue to make adjustments as we move forward. And, and Eric will, will provide, uh, recommendations. And of course, um, uh, whichever, um, commissioner, uh, is involved, uh, you'll be part of that process in terms of, of, of looking at the projects and, and identifying the amounts that are appropriate on any particular industrial siding project. So, uh, I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you, John. You okay with that, Roy? Thank you. Eric, anything to add to that?
Um, one thing I want to bring up, and you, and you might be bringing this up, Mr. Chairman, is that we keep hearing discussions, uh, especially at the last two, is that there's, there's a potential for these to go away. And, uh, you know, last year they tried legislation to remove it from 2.76 to I think another 1.76. It was somewhere, I don't know, somewhere around there. I think the commissioners need to be aware of it, uh, so does the Wyoming Commissioners Association, uh, Jeremiah Reiman. Um, all aware that moving into this session, there's a lot of pressure coming from the legislators, from what I understand to the council. And so, um, because this money does, uh, come out of the fund, general fund initially, which is reimbursed, from what I understand. And so I think that, especially with the cuts that are going on with the state, like Chairman Johnson said, you know, there, there's that issue of a little bit of a conflict there. And so, uh, not a little bit, there is a conflict, I think, but that's our opinion. But, um, yeah, just moving forward, uh, just need you, the commissioners to be aware of that, Mr. Chairman. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Any other comments, commissioners? With none, I'll close. And Eric, you stole the words right out of my mouth with the aspect of, yes, I've sat in on committee meetings, interim committee meetings when industrial siding's been conversed, as well as when I sit there at these other hearings, I really sense two things. One, there's a real strong part to eliminate industrial siding, um, component for this. And that's a huge push from the big industries because they're the ones that pay it based on those costs. Second of all, I think the state has directed the, uh, council to, with reason, based on the new changes in the statute this last year, which states they cannot deny without giving reason. They have to give reason, which is what they didn't have to do on the Exxon Mobil, but they did have to do with this one, as Mr. Johnson commented. So with that, any amount of dollars that, uh, they can retain from this and not give to the counties, cities and towns, they can put in their general fund. So they look at it as money for them as well. So very well stated, um, we'll continue to work with it. I think the future industrial sightings will continue to get more difficult. We're working with the council, but I truly believe, um, you and John and the people working with you through these processes are sensing where the council's coming from and have had the ability to prepare the best you can. But unfortunately, sometimes it comes out of the woodworks or not prepared. And, uh, but yet, you know what? Lessons learned. We'll get ready for the next one. So, but you guys have done a great job. Commissioners, anything else for Eric or John DeLeone? With that, I'd like to say thank you for that report. Very well done and, uh, very interesting. And I hope any community people that were watching, uh, had the ability to get a little better understanding. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, John. Please stay safe and stay well. Thanks for joining us. Okay, commissioners, moving on. Under tab queue, what I'd like to do is take this item and then a mind, five minute break when we're finished with Marty. Um, so, uh, with this tab queue is vehicle and equipment exchange and surplus sale. Um, joining us is Ms. Dernovich. Good morning, Marty. Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Here's, um, I'll try and make this quick, uh, not a lot here. So, um, as you know, with the COVID, uh, getting our new vehicles last fiscal year actually took longer than we anticipated. And of course, once you get the new vehicles, especially with like the sheriff's department, it takes a while to get them outfitted and ready to be put out into service. So usually we have one of these cells prior to this time. And just because of COVID, it, it got put back. So in your packet, um, there's a list of, of the vehicles and some tractors and things. Uh, Chris and, and Jean at the parks department have been going through and, and kind of cleaning up, if you will, uh, several old tractors and lawn mowers and, and some trailers that are unsafe to be pulling and hauling the equipment that they use. And so those are on the list. I would like to let the board know, and I do apologize for this. After submitting this for the board packet, um, we added three more pickups to the list. Uh, they were a 2007 Dodge pickup with 120,000 miles on it. A 2004 Dodge truck with 139,000 and a, uh, 2005 Ford pickup with, uh, 90,000 uh, miles on it that has a Cadillac converter out and the transmission is out. And it has some severe, uh, body damage. After talking to the guys at the maintenance shop, they said it costs more than the vehicle. more than the vehicle is worth to repair it. So that's why we added it to the cell. Um, I also included, I, uh, received a email and that's included in your packet as well from Mayor, uh, McCollum from Granger, asking if, if the commission would be willing to either one donate a, a vehicle. They're, they're in the same boat as everybody else as far as budgets, restraints and, and the like. Um, or if they would be given first opportunity to look at the vehicles and purchase it prior to us putting it out to public sell. Um, I will let the board know that in the past, the commission has, uh, donated, uh, equipment like this to other agencies and, and municipalities within that county, just as a means of, uh, good, good, uh, community working relations, I, I would say. Um, and I think it's a good, a good way of, of use, getting the best out of all of the vehicles and, and surplus properties. It's all tax dollars that bought it. So, you know, to turn around and sell it to them really doesn't make sense to me, but that's definitely the board's decision. So I'm here today to, one, ask if the board would consider a, a donation to the town of Granger, uh, off of one of these vehicles in the list. And, um, Mayor McCollum has not come and seen them yet. Um, but I, I have provided him the list and, and so I'm not sure which one he's interested in as of today. And two, after, if that's something the board is interested in doing, either to donate or to sell to them, and then allow us to put this out to public sell.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I surely agree with, uh, what Marty's saying about giving it to the town of Granger. We've done that in the past over the many years I've been involved in. It does make sense. Those are taxpayer dollars. Those people are taxpayers. So I strongly support that. But I have a question, Marty. You call this the vehicle sale and exchange. What, what's the word exchange mean on this?
So, uh, Commissioner Johnson, what that, that relates to is, and unfortunately on this particular list, after talking to the guys at the shop, they said, do not exchange any of these vehicles with the other vehicles. So for example, um, we'll use, uh, maybe the county attorneys has a, a vehicle. And if one of these vehicles that are on the list is in better shape than the one that is currently in a department, we would exchange that out and sell the, sell the vehicle that's in the worst condition. Um, we also do an exchange a lot with like the libraries, Southwest Counseling, uh, the, you know, different agencies. If they have a vehicle that's in, in worse condition than what we're selling, we'll exchange those two out so that we're getting rid of the oldest, most vulnerable piece of equipment that we, that the county has.
Thank you, Marty. If, if we approve this, uh, then you, you're, we would give you the authorization to, to make those exchanges then. And I see nothing wrong with that. I'm just asking the question, is that, is that how the process would work?
Yes, that is.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions, commissioners? Marty, I have one. It resorts back to the exchange. Um, if somebody comes to you and wishes to exchange, I sense that you follow the recommendation of the mechanics, the guys that do repairs and then make that decision. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Marty. Other questions, commissioners? Commissioners, with no further questions, what's your pleasure regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I make motion that we approve the listing as shown for a vehicle sale and exchange, including the three additional pickups that aren't shown, and, uh, authorize the chairman to sign any required documents and authorize the, uh, Ms. Dernovich to handle it as we've exchanged, as we've discussed in relative to exchanges.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Lloyd to approve. Any further discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, is that, um, are we allowing Granger to, are we allowing, we're going to give it to Granger as well? Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners.
Stay safe. Commissioners, I'd like, uh, at this point in time, entertain a five-minute break. Be back here in five minutes and we'll meet with Mr. McLean on health insurance premiums. Thank you. Okay, Tim. I'd like to call this, uh, meeting back to order of Sweetwater County Commissioners. And moving on with our agenda, let's move into tab R, which is a discussion and approval of health insurance, uh, premium schedule. And up is Mr. McLean, our HR director. Good morning, Gary. Welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. Um, it's that time of year again for, uh, open enrollment. Um, as you know, health insurance is a large percentage of overall budget and ever increasing expense to the county and to employees. Um, a few weeks ago, Diversified had, uh, presented to the board kind of a state of the state of the health insurance. Um, and of course, the two primary drivers of those health insurance costs are large claims. Um, we used to have, uh, four or five large claims, uh, per year. Those large claims are over $70,000. Now we have 15 or 16 a year and magnitude of those claims have gotten larger. Um, and then probably most notably over the past several years, as most of you realize individually, um, prescription drugs, especially for, um, biopharmaceuticals, uh, DNA-based drugs have gone out of the roof. Um, they're charging extremely exorbitant rates for those drugs. In some cases they're very effective, but they're also unbelievably expensive. Um, last year was the first year in our plan that we had, uh, individuals actually exceed the stop loss limit of 175,000 on prescription drugs alone. No medical, just prescription drugs. Um, and so as we move into a challenging economic time, um, and I, um, asked, uh, to, uh, and worked with Diversified to try to find some options, um, that would allow us to, uh, contain costs or in ideal world, save some money. And I think we've come up with a, a pretty good plan to hold, um, premiums with no increase. Um, as you know, when we met a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at a, at an eight percent increase. That amounts to about $600,000 a year. Um, and so, um, we've come up with what I think's a reasonable trade-off, uh, in working with them to get a, uh, zero premium increase for this year and, um, some savings later in the year after about March. And I'm going to kind of just run through that with you. Um, so a couple of things, um, that are notable, um, in order to accomplish, uh, this. One is that we need to carve out the pharmacy part from UMR. UMR is the third-party administrator that pays our claims. Um, they also are the pharmacy benefit manager or PBM. Um, there's a game out there, for lack of a better term, that's played with pharmacy pricing. It has to do with rebates and how much you get. And they don't disclose what the prices are to pharmacies. And so, um, it's just kind of like shell game that's going on. More recently, there's, uh, pharmacy benefit management companies out there who, um, have a transparent, uh, model with regard to pricing and with regard to, uh, discounts and, um, and some other programs. Some of those other programs include buying some of the drugs from tier one countries. Um, so especially some of the really expensive drugs, uh, from say Canada or England or other countries, um, at huge savings. So, um, in doing some of the analysis, this is an example, we have one drug, um, that we spend $400,000 a year on for one person, one drug. Um, under this program of buying that drug through Canada, which will be a mail order, uh, we would save $200,000 alone just on that. Here's the irony of that. That drug is manufactured in the United States and then shipped to Canada. And if we buy it back from Canada, we save 200,000. If we buy it in the United States, which is how it's done, we pay an additional 200,000. So, um, that is the absolute crazy world of pharmacy, especially on these high-end drugs. Um, so we expect, um, uh, to save a considerable amount of money on that. Um, the, um, the other component to this is, um, a spousal HRA program. Um, over the past few years, especially with declining economies, we've had more and more people, um, hop on the county plan, um, as opposed to their plan. Yeah, we've had, um, so what this plan essentially does is create a win-win circumstance. If an individual stays on their company plan, we'll pick up their, their premium and their out-of-pocket maximums. Obviously, we only have to have one high-dollar claimant to save that. So, um, in the past, oh, five, six, seven years, we've had several, um, high-dollar, and by high-dollar, I mean over half a million dollar claims, um, that have been for spouses that had, could have potentially had coverage other places. So if we even get one of those, it, it would more than pay for the cost. I don't know how many we'll get in the first year, but we expect to have a few, uh, down the, down the road. The bottom line is the, uh, impacts, uh, for these savings to employees. Um, there will be some new insurance cards issued with the new pharmaceutical and employees would have to get new scripts to renew their, uh, medication. Often they have to do that anyway. Um, and there, there's a possibility of some tier changes, meaning, um, uh, some drugs, depending on who the pharmacy manage, benefit manager is, are in tier one or tier two. Sometimes that results in a slight increase in cost, sometimes a slight decrease, but the impact should be very minimal. And I think more, uh, than offset by the savings, um, because we're not changing the overall plan, we're not changing the benefit. We're just really, uh, tightening up how those benefits are managed and where we get those. Um, there's, um, some opportunities out there to exclude certain prescriptions so that they're not automatically paid. It allows us to try to get, um, discounts and rebates from the manufacturers, um, for employees. Um, and some of these high-end drugs, um, that's a good way to significantly reduce the cost. That would be another component, um, of, of the change. Um, there are some more aggressive changes on the pharmacy, um, that we can entertain. Obviously they have more, um, impacts from an employee standpoint. Um, and we'll be evaluating those a little further, uh, in this year. Uh, but at this time, this seems like a, a really good step to try to maintain premium stability, save the county, um, a considerable bunch of money and, and, uh, really have, um, uh, no impact on the benefits, but employees will have a little bit of disruption in terms of new cards and getting some scripts. But I think that's more than offset by the cost. Um, in March, um, we have an opportunity, we've been evaluating a, a third-party provider that helps with large claims. Um, and that company, um, has some innovative products. We've reviewed it a couple of times. We've reviewed- We've reviewed them with Diversified also. We think we can get another three-and-a-half percent savings with that, but it requires a lot more communication and coordination and even some training. So we're not including that in this model, but we're looking at March 1 timeframe, which would give us an opportunity to communicate that better and coordinate a rollout on that. Again, that would be about a three-and-a-half percent savings there. What this also means is that we had planned for an eight percent increase for this fiscal year. That's what was budgeted. So at the county, we included an eight percent increase for this fiscal year. That will result, not increasing the premiums, will result for this fiscal year in a three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar savings, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar savings. The component units will also realize some savings respectfully in their areas in that regard. And I have a detailed breakout on that if anyone is interested now or during the budget discussions. So given the state of where things are at and trying to balance off having effective benefit programs with costs and services, this seems to be a really proactive way to go. It attacks the things that are driving costs, which are large claims and prescription, large claim prescription drugs, and puts us in a better position to try to contain costs as best we can. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. But again, I'm not requesting any change of premiums right now.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shaneville.
Gary, did you send out a breakdown of everything that you just described to us? I've looked a couple of times through my emails, and I wasn't able to find anything.
No, I haven't. And part of the reason is, Lauren, we are, still don't have the final stop-loss numbers from the stop-loss provider. What we put in the breakdown, which is what you reviewed, is the worst-case scenario. As we get the final numbers, I'm hoping this week, I will send that out to everyone in terms of the breakdown. But I do not have the final stop-loss numbers yet. As you know, stop-loss providers, especially because we have some very large claims, do not want to commit until they absolutely have to in terms of pricing in case there's changes on those large claims. So we're kind of playing this day by day until we get the final stop-loss amount locked in. But in terms of the premiums, we've put in the worst-case scenario so that savings could actually be greater. But I do have the five models and the pricing structure for those here without a final stop-loss amount.
Danny, your question, Lauren?
Kind of. I guess I just want to voice that I would really like to have the opportunity to look through those before we approve anything, even if it's without the stop-loss and having, you know, the worst-case scenario in there. I think that's really important for us to take into consideration and to take the time to look at, so.
Thank you. Other comments, Commissioners? Other comments? Other questions? Questions for Gary? Anything that will result in a zero increase versus eight percent increase is worth looking at, Gary. And I've heard you talk about those before, that type of thing. It was just a matter of time before they came before us to where, you know, we'd be in a position where we really need to look at them. So that'll be my comments at this moment. Commissioners, any other comments, questions? None? Commissioners, do you wish to act on it today, or do you wish to see some more data from Gary and then at the next meeting? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I think we need to have an exhibit. I think Lauren's right. We need to have a look at that before we take any action. I think Gary's done an exemplary job of putting some numbers together, and if we can save three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, I think we surely should have a close look at that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Does any Commissioner disagree with that?
I would agree with that.
Thank you. Gary, will there be any problem to get some...
Sorry, I will email you right here. Are the options that we're entertaining. I will have those emailed to you before the next ten minutes. Their discussion of each one of those options and the costs. They're actually the rate sheet without any final stop-loss numbers, but our worst-case projection in there. I actually had Diversified prepare those with the most current information they have. So I will email that, those summaries up there with five individual options, and the savings in there are at the bottom, and I will email those.
Thank you, Gary. Now, if you get those out right away and the Commissioners review them. Commissioners, do you have enough time between now and then to review? Get questions from Gary so we can put this back on the next agenda for action?
I feel we would.
Okay. Very good. Lauren agrees. I think, Jeff, I saw your head shake, so while I already earlier commented, yeah, we should do it. No action at this moment. We'll put it on the next agenda. But are there any more questions or any information you as Commissioners would like from Gary at this moment, with the understanding that upon reviewing it, you'll talk to him before the next meeting and be ready to act on it? Okay, Gary, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll have, make sure that gets on the next agenda, Sally. And then let's move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be the request from the Attorney's Office to replace a vacant position. And with us is Mr. McLean, our HR Director, and our County Attorney, Mr. Aramosbi. Welcome back.
Good to be here.
The floor is yours, gentlemen. Whoever wishes to go first.
Chairman, County Commissioners, just to be clear, the vacancy is not pending. So just clear about that.
What a shame.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. As you recall, we had two vacancies as a result of the early retirement within the County Attorney's Office that have already been approved. One is already left, the other will be leaving in December. In addition to that, we have an additional retiree that'll bring total vacancies within, that'll be forthcoming in December. Those will bring the total vacancies to three. What Mr. Aramosbi is requesting is to fill one of those, which would be a legal assistant position, and you have the summary in your packets for that, and then to hold off on those other two as long as we can and achieve as much savings as we can in those other areas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLean. Ms. Attorney Aramosbi, do you have anything to add?
Well, first off, I think I got the wrong agenda because I was supposed to appear at eleven thirty-five, and so I must have... But don't worry about the delay. It allowed me to vote twice, so.
We could set this aside and do it another time since we're so late for you, and maybe it might get lost in the woodwork. What's your pleasure, Mr. Aramosbi?
Well, now that you've said that, basically, Mr. Chairman and rest of Commissioners, this is a position that, you know, we are working to hold off on filling all the positions, so we can at least try to recoup those costs that the county was trying to get with the BSP. But we are logged down. But once the courts opened up, we've been extremely busy. We're always busy, but we've been extremely busy. And, you know, so I'm asking for the approval of that. And I just want to point out a couple of things that we try to do at this office in order to help out in these situations. As you know, we did not involve ourselves in the wage study. That's something that our office was not involved in, and so we have been kind of outside of looking at the, you know, outside of the things that I do outside my office with the legislature regarding the wages. And also, you know, when you look at comparison counties like Campbell County, you know, we're a good one million dollars lower in budget with the like-sized office and like-sized criminal product that they have to put out up there. So we're doing the best we can with what we have, and I think we can, you know, we're making moves and we're moving things around to try to work through the losses of these two members. We're soon to have, you know, as it goes on to next year, I think our victim grant fund is going to be drastically reduced. Boca is the, is kind of the highlighter of that, and they pretty much said, we got drastically reduced this last year, and the upcoming season, it's going to be even worse. So, you know, we're looking at some significant adjustments coming down the road, but we wanted to get somebody in right now so that we can start training them while we still have the available staff to do so without, you know, feeling the downside of the logjam that we have with our courts.
Thank you, Danny. Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. Aramosbi or Mr. McLean?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd.
And this could be for Attorney Aramosbi or for Mr. McLean. So right now, we have the two current openings based upon the retirement, and there was said that there would be a third one that would be coming due to retirement. When do we expect that third position to become open?
And Gary, I believe, is that our victim coordinator position, I think we're talking about?
Yeah, so we have two individuals who took early retirement, have already signed and been approved by the board, and then we have one additional position, which is retiring in December, and that'll bring the total vacancies to three. And what Kenny Attorney Aramosbi is requesting is to fill one of those vacancies now.
And Commissioner Lloyd, the victim coordinator position is going to be open at the end of December. And that's a position that's not, we're not requesting to be filled at this point. We're just requesting to have a legal assistant position filled.
And so Attorney Aramosbi will just be filling one of the three openings, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioners, any other questions for either Danny or Gary?
Yeah, so the one person retiring chose not to take the early retirement, just retiring on their own.
They were not eligible due to years of service or...
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions? Commissioners, your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Forgive me just a second to wipe the tears out of my eyes from listening to our County Attorney. He always has, he just tells a great story. I believe that we should honor the request, and I make a motion to honor that request to fill one of the vacant positions with position of legal assistant as requested.
Okay, we have a motion to approve filling the position by Commissioner Johnson's. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioners, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. I was going to, Mr. Aramosbi, kind of congratulate you because I was sensing maybe you would take the lead in starting to reduce personnel and as an elected official down to three, but I got to hold that one off for a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd hold that one off. I'll tell you this, we're going to do our darndest to try to keep it going and, you know, and I don't want to have Commissioner Johnson have to refer to a hanky to dab the sympathy tears, but we're going to do our best to try to do what we can with what we have. You know, if I come forward to the commission for a filling, it's going to be something that I think we need.
Thank you, Danny. The other question I have, and I know this takes a little more time, is your sense of at what capacity are the court cases being held? Are they moving fast, quick, a hundred percent? What's the feeling out of your office?
Well, we've had, we actually had three trials since they opened up in October, late September and October. We had three trials, which for here has been pretty quick. We had one settle right after jury selection, another one settled the night before we were supposed to go, which was kind of surprising, but we were fully expected to have five trials back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back. And now there's typically, there's always a break between November and December because of the holidays, and it's tough to fit in a jury trial in there, although we do have some set at the end of November, which look like they're going. And one thing to understand is when we have a jury trial, that takes out two attorneys for, you know, approximately two weeks, two weeks of prep, and then the week of the, so approximately three weeks. And that takes out two attorneys and their assistants so they could prep for that jury trial. It takes a lot of time and effort to do a jury trial, and it's a burden on the office. I shouldn't say it's a burden, it's our job, but it's a hardship of the office, and so everybody else has to step in. If we have somebody sick or on vacation during that time, it's really difficult to get through those times.
And there's always a win in a trial jury, right?
Not always.
Depends on what side of the fence you're on.
Exactly. Somebody got a win. Not always us.
Well, we appreciate that update, and I was curious how the courts were moving along and that. So you guys keep working hard, appreciate your work, and so does the county. So you stay safe, and thanks for joining us today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on, Tab T., another request to replace a vacant position in the sheriff's office. And with that, we have Mr. McLean, our HR Director, and our Sheriff Grossnickel with us today. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you for joining us. Gary, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. We have a request to restaff a vacancy in the detention center for a food service worker. Had a position that just didn't work out here, and we need to replace that. Just for the board's edification, and because I think it's important in this discussion, several months ago, working with the sheriff, we had eliminated the food service manager, which was a higher-paid position in here, a total cost of employment of almost a hundred thousand dollars. We eliminated that position and went to supervising the kitchen staff with the lieutenant or sergeant who's on shift at that time. That's been working out pretty well. It's been a big cost savings in this area, but it doesn't allow much leeway for other staffing because obviously the food service manager was part of the cooking staff. With that vacancy gone, there's very little leeway in here in terms of preparing meals. I'm not sure what the average daily census is right now, but historically, the jails had about a hundred and thirty-six average daily census. The maximum capacity is two-eleven, and so preparing three meals a day, seven days a week for those folks is challenging at best.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLean. Sheriff Grossnickel, anything to add?
Just on those numbers, with COVID, we've gone down with our population, but we are over a hundred with our inmates. That will, that number will come up once we can implement other programs that we're doing. And, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll take a little of the accolades to be the first elected official that's not going to fill the two voluntary separation positions if you want to give that out now.
Well said. It's endorsed. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any questions for our... Well said. It's endorsed. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. McLean or Sheriff Grossnickel?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
Just to comment, I, I've said this before. I think Sheriff Grossnickel has been the, the most responsive to the needs of the county with cost reduction. He's cut people out of that department. He's done an outstanding job that, with, by doing that. And I don't see that the safety of the residents of Sweetwater County has suffered at all. And I applaud what he's done. And he's already stepped forward and he's not going to replace those two positions. So it's consistent with what he's done all along. He's streamlined his organization and he's just done that in the best interests of Sweetwater County.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other comments, questions, Commissioners? Without any further questions, comment for myself. John, I can echo the same comments as Commissioner Johnson and not only for your department, but just all the other departments and that that are working. So thank you much. Commissioners, with no further questions, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to restack the vacant position for the food service worker as presented.
We have a motion to approve restaffing of the position as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. You and your staff stay safe out there. And thanks for joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, have a good day.
Thank you. Our next item was an agenda amended item, Tab U, which was a request for e-signature. And I asked Mr. McLean and Mr. Knight will be on to present this. So gentlemen, whichever one of you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. As we started this process in terms of the response to COVID, in fact, probably even prior to that, when we were working on continuity of government forms with the emergency management folks, it became apparent that county government has a number of processes that require authorization from people in order to keep the wheels of government moving. And with people operating out of remote locations, out of their homes and at their office, it was apparent that we needed to have the ability to approve documents through some electronic signature tool. And so I've been working with Tim for some time to look at a product that's probably most of you have used at least as a signatory to, is a product called DocuSign. So we scheduled, actually had a serendipitous call from, from one of their folks. And we set up some demos, reviewed the project, the product, and, and just recently received some pricing on that product. But essentially, what the product allows you to do is take existing forms or to create forms. A simple example would be contracts or any of the things that are before the board today. And it will track those electronic signatures and provide tracking for who signed and who hasn't. For the, I don't know, premium model or for the, for the enterprise level model, for folks like the commissioners, you'd have the ability to open documents on your phone and review them and click to sign on your phone if, if you needed to do that. So it provides a tremendous amount of versatility. In addition to that, there's some features that allow, for example, bulk distribution of things like policy manual updates or other things where we need signatories to approve or authorize. Potentially could be used for vouchers and most other county processes that currently require physical signatures. I've been working on this project in the veteran services arena for some time. The VA now accepts most of their things signed electronically. We submitted to the VA. Obviously, where we have people all over from Afton to Wamset or to Evanston, the ability for people to approve, submit a lot of their VA claims electronically would be an important tool there also. Lastly, in, in reviewing this, the, the, this tool in particular, at least for right now, seems to meet the criteria for COVID reimbursement and COVID funding. And we would like to seek that for right now. So to talk some specifics, the, the way these transactions are managed are by envelopes. So if we have a contract and we send out to be signed, that's an envelope. If we send out ten, to ten employees to sign their personnel thing, that would be ten envelopes. And so the way that the pricing for these things works is based on, based on the number of envelopes. And so obviously, we don't have any history with this. So it's hard to gauge exactly how many envelopes we would need. But given the fact that we have access to the COVID funding, I think it would be appropriate to make sure that we have high enough envelopes so that we can don't have to renew the contract and so that we can meet all of our needs. The price that we would be looking at were two thousand envelopes or a thousand envelopes would be enterprise level, pricing is nine thousand seven hundred. The two thousand envelopes is fifteen thousand eight hundred. Obviously, the price per envelope goes down as the quantity goes up. In looking at this, we think almost every division of county government would benefit from being able to do this. The board is an obvious one, but we think almost every department would be able to do that. So right now, our recommendation would be to sign up for two thousand envelopes at fifteen thousand eight hundred or the best price that, that we can negotiate. And, and then revisit that volume in a year from now to see how much we've actually used and whether that amount would need to be increased or decreased. The, obviously, this was not something that was in any departmental budget. And so in terms of purchasing it now, which we could do simply by phone call, we have to figure out how we wanted to do that, whether that's through the board or through Tim's budget or how, how the board would like to, to see that handled. It, it seems probably best managed in Tim's budget in that it's, it, it is a software product. But I, I think that's an administrative issue. So if you have any questions, I think between the two of us, we'd be prepared to address any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Before we go to questions, Tim, is there anything you want to add?
No, I think, I think Gary covered it pretty well. I will say that usually for these things to be successful, you need a department that will step up and kind of take the lead on that. And Gary's kind of done a good job of, of kind of being the person that will lead that part. There's, there's quite a few documents there, but I think, I think it'll be really good. And I would be willing to probably take this out of my budget in the hopes that we could get that reimbursed through the COVID money in anticipation for it and then see where we're at towards the end of the year. If, if there needs to be a budget amendment, we could do it at that point. But we could probably do it that way, at least to start.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, questions for either Gary or Mr. Knight?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I would like to see the documentation around this similar to the last presentation as to what, what all this includes, what the cost is, all of that.
No problem. We'll send that out today.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Gary, if we act on this by, at the next meeting, is there still time to receipt it and send it in for care reimbursement?
I think so, because it's, it's a product that's cloud-based. And we're just basically telling them they'll send over a pricing agreement. And so I, I don't, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? I have one question as I hear this. Initial cost for two thousand, basically what we know is fifteen eight. Is there a yearly renewal cost?
The yearly, there's a, like a five hundred dollar setup fee. So the, the annual cost would be about fifteen thousand three hundred. Meaning you have, because basically what you're doing is reloading your two thousand envelopes, two thousand envelopes, two thousand. Use those.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Well, I think at this time, if nobody objects, we'll have you put this on the next meeting for action for the commissioners and send out information to all of us so we can review it. And again, it's one of those topics, Commissioners, as you reveal the information. If you've got any questions, talk with Gary or Tim and get answers hopefully for your questions. So we can decide at the next meeting in November. Commissioners?
Information package is, is, is pretty robust. And so, like I said, we, we got the pricing yesterday, final pricing model, but we'll, we'll kick that out today.
Very good. You okay? Lauren, will that meet your needs? Okay. And I think it'll meet everybody else. Does anybody object? Next meeting, we'll act on it. Okay, thank you, Gary. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that because it's something in this present day, I think we need to look at very carefully for doing business. With that, we come to the next part, which is that concludes our scheduled agenda items. Moving into other, does anybody have anything they wish to put on for the next meeting or something to go over at this time, Commissioners? I'm not seeing any nods. I do have one question. Commissioner Lloyd, going to require a work session at the next board meeting?
Yeah, we'll have to have a, we will, for strategic planning, we would need to have a, a work session or a workshop, yes.
Are you anticipating, I noticed when I had looked and reviewed all that information, it appeared as though you had some individual groups possibly working together. What, what do you anticipate the role of the Commissioners to be at the, in that afternoon workshop?
Um, I, I will have an agenda out by early next week, but we will, we'll just continue to work through what we need to do to move forward with some strategic plan, get a little bit of information from the groups if there's any at that point. But then also start kind of working together as a group and, and getting a little more specific of our goals and how we're going to accomplish them. So.
Very good. Appreciate that type of information. Please remind Sally that we advertised that workshop, please.
I will.
Thank you very much. With that, Commissioners, there's nothing more under other. I'll entertain a motion for an executive session for personnel. So moved. By Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We'll move into executive session, but let's take a 10-minute break. Everybody be back here. Let's just say, oh, man, let's say one o'clock sharp. That's 12 minutes. One o'clock.